Welcome everyone and welcome to our council meeting. Today is October fifteenth. And before we start our official agenda, we would like to invite Bishop Ike Cockett from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints to come up and give us some words of wisdom.
Sorry? Thank you. Thank you Chair Reposo and County Council members. At this time, I'd just like to provide the invocation for this meeting. If we could bow our heads in prayer. Our kindly gracious eternal Father in heaven, we humbly come before thee at the beginning of this county council meeting with gratitude in our hearts for our council members, for their willingness to serve our Kauai'ohana in this most honorable way. Father, we ask thee to bless each of our council members, bless them with clarity of mind regarding issues as they discern better from best resolutions. Bless them with Christ-like love as they come to decisions which benefit all in our community. That they may be able to walk in the shoes of the least of our brothers and yet have a brotherly understanding and love for them. Bless them that they will have health and strength to embark upon this council meeting and complete the work that is presented to them. Father, we ask a special blessing be upon their families, husbands, wives, sons, daughters, as well as their extended families for the love and support they provide which allows them to serve. Father, at this time, I invoke a priesthood blessing by the authority of the Holy Mokes the priesthood and in the name of Jesus Christ, that this council may always aspire to make the best decisions for the common good of our community and that this philosophy may always dwell at the forefront of their minds and in their hearts. That they may not simply accommodate and tolerate, but genuinely see, understand, acknowledge, counsel, and aloha one to another. That today and throughout this council meeting, they understand the diverse backgrounds that each have, but that as children of God, they recognize that we are all one in Jesus Christ is my prayer and we ask for these blessings humbly in the name, in the sacred name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you.
Bishop, thank you very much. Okay, we have two public hearings today. So Madam Clerk, can we read the notice for Bill number twenty-nine seventy-two, please?
Notice is hereby given that the Kauai County Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October fifteenth, 2025, at eight thirty a.m. or soon thereafter in the council chambers, four three nine six Wright Street and the historic county building. On Bill number two-nine seven-two, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter sixteen, Kauai County Code nineteen eighty-seven as amended relating to the traffic code. This is for e-bicycles. This bill proposes to create necessary definitions for emerging technologies and in accompanying this section to Chapter sixteen, Kauai County Code nineteen eighty-seven as amended, that addresses electric bicycles and their safe allowable use on public roads thereby reducing the frequency and severity of e-bike related incidents. Chair, we have one piece of written testimony.
Thank you. If anyone in the audience wishing to speak on the e-bike legislation? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Can you read the notice for Bill number twenty-nine seventy-four, please?
Notice is hereby given that the Kauai County Council will hold a public hearing on October fifteenth, 2025, at eight thirty a.m. or soon thereafter in the council chambers, four three nine six Wright Street and the historic county building in Le Hue on Bill number two-nine seven-four, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-three, Kauai County Code nineteen eighty-seven as amended relating to the regulation of business and trades. This is for taxicab rates for touring or chartered time. This bill proposes to amend Chapter twenty-three, Kauai County Code nineteen eighty-seven as amended by increasing the taxicab rates relating to touring and chartered time. Chair, we have one piece of written testimony for this bill also.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to testify on the taxicab bill? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. With that, I will call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Here.
Councilmember Cavalli.
Here.
Councilmember Cowden should be on her way. Councilmember Holland.
Present.
Councilmember Kanashiro is excused. Councilmember Cooley is on his way and Council Chair Reposo.
Here.
For present.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Chair, on page two are the minutes of the following meetings of the council, the September seventeen, 2025 council meeting and the September twenty-fourth, 2025 council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Concerned as an interview for the Board of Ethics, this is for Chloe Waipa, ex-officio for term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-seven.
With that, I'll suspend the rules and welcome Chloe and Ellen.
Morning. Ellen Cheng, Boards and Commissions Administrator. Today, I'm pleased to introduce Chloe Waipa. Chloe was born and raised on Kauai and attended Wilcox Elementary and Chief is Kamakahele. She is currently a senior at Kauai High School. To add to her busy senior year, she joined the Key Club. The Key Club is an international student-led organization that develops leadership, builds builds characters, character, and promotes caring through service to others in the community and school. Members participate in diverse service projects and learn leadership by planning projects, running meetings, and holding elected positions. The club's motto, "Caring Our Way of Life," emphasizes its focus on giving primary to human and spiritual values over material ones. At the end of the month, the Key Club will be assisting us with the county's spooktacular event. When she's not busy with school, filling out college applications and Key Club service projects. As a freshman, Chloe followed her big sister into paddling. She paddles with her high school team and the Kaiola Kanu Club. Through it all, she's also been a member of the Girl Scouts for the past twelve years. Like all teenagers, she still finds time to hang out with friends, enjoys reading and going for runs at the Marriott. Chloe enjoys traveling and has visited quite a few states on the mainland, California, Oregon, Washington, Utah, New York, and Florida. Her dream trip would be to Disneyland Paris. She's also a foodie, although she's not a cook. She's willing to learn. Her favorite dish, king crab. Chloe is the daughter of proud parents Chelsea and Corey Sakai. Chloe is the youngest of three with two older sisters. When Chloe learned about the opportunity for students to become a member of a board of commission, she jumped at the chance and submitted her application. With the current state of politics, the Board of Ethics is more important than ever. It is the vanguard of maintaining the public trust and ensuring that all county officers and employees adhere to the Code of Ethics. I'm so grateful that Chloe is willing to contribute her time during her busy senior year to join the Board of Ethics.
Thank you, Ellen. Chloe, you want to add anything to that amazing introduction?
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity and allow me to be here and I'm excited to learn more as this goes on.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions for Chloe? Mr. Bolosan?
Thank you again for serving. How did you get interested in serving?
I recently went to this close-up program in Washington, D.C. where we learned about, sorry, political engagement and when I got, when I saw this opportunity, I decided to jump at it.
Awesome. A couple more questions.
Go ahead.
Do you like reading?
Yes, I do.
Awesome. You definitely will get to read a lot. I guess as far as ethics-wise, what is kind of your framework philosophy around like community ethics? Or your personal ethics? How do you see yourself? How you hold up standards to people, to yourself? It's a difficult question.
Can I think about it?
Yeah, you can definitely think about it. That's a great answer.
Good thing. I just told her before the meeting, no worries. No worries. You know, there's a best answer for that. Hey, doing the right thing even when no one's watching. That's to me, when no one's watching.
Yeah, just very proud of you, Chloe, and you know, your efforts to step forward and there's lots more to come. And it sounds like you've experienced so many different parts already, you know? So I'm happy that you're at the forefront, you're at the table right now for this particular role and lots more to come for you. So very proud of you and thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
I have no question but a comment. Is that okay?
Okay, let me finish up with the rest and then we can come back to you. Oh, no? Okay? All right, go ahead.
Yes, I want to thank you so much. I apologize for the hard questions, but actually, my first introduction to politics or serving the community here on Kauai was actually serving on the Ethics Board back in two thousand and fifteen. And so I'm super excited because you're going to learn so much, but mostly, you're going to give a lot. Your perspective and your understanding of how the world works, your relationships, your connections to the community is going to be foundational to helping create a solid ground of making good decisions and your input is very valuable. And so whatever you can contribute just by being in the position and staying there is going to help the community in ways that we will not understand until later. And that's kind of the beauty of supporting community and to see you willing to step up and do that, it's just such an honor and I respect you so much for doing what you're doing.
Anything else?
I just want to thank you. Thank you for being involved. Thank you for doing this. I agree with a lot of what Councilmember Bolosan said and I think this will be a great opportunity for our community to have your voice, but also for you to hopefully rise even more so in your service. So thank you. Thank you very much for stepping up.
Mr. Cooley?
Yeah, I too want to say mahalo nui loa. And I want to encourage you, look what happened to him. So I want you to think about your next ten years and grow in this county because we could use young Hawaiian women like you right here. Thank you.
Anything else? If not, thank you, Chloe. You know, I just got to say, I'm always so impressed when we interview the high school students for our commissions. Mayor Kawakami made that happen a while back and it was kind of thinking outside the box because who would think that a juvenile would be able to serve on these commissions? But we, this council fully supported it. When I was your age, the last thing I would ever consider doing would be doing anything involving a commission or politics. It just was never in my brain. So I'm always impressed. And, and you know, Ethics Commission is a, is a very interesting, as Mr. Bolosan said, and you're going to, you're going to hear a lot of stuff and learn. But more importantly is what you said, you went up to DC and learned about political engagement, civic engagement. That is so critical. And hopefully, this experience will get you to share your experiences with others in your generation so that they can all engage because that's what is so critical. So thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you, Ellen. And thank you, Mom. Chelsea Sakai is a mom and thank you very much for allowing her to do this. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's do the consent calendar and then we'll do the out of order items.
Chair, items on the consent calendar for receipt, C two zero two five dash two zero three and C two zero two five dash two zero four.
Move to receive. Second. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You know, we were going to take the Poipu Roads issue, but we do have KPD here. We have three very minor items on the agenda and we need to get them out of here because they have a project this afternoon that they need to work on. So if there's no objection, Madam Clerk, can we take twenty twenty-five two oh eight out of order, please?
On page three, C two zero two five dash two zero eight, communication from Makana Rivera, Assistant Chief of Police Support Services Bureau, requesting council approval of the indemnification provisions contained in the State of Hawaii Department of Education application for use of school buildings, facilities, or grounds in order for the Kauai Police Department on occasion to use DOE grounds for events, including but not limited to promotions and the Kauai Police Activities League's sporting events and other related activities in calendar year twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Madam Clerk, can we have twenty-eight twenty-five dash two-ten, please?
On page three, C two zero two five dash two-ten, communication from Darren Rhodes, Assistant Chief of Police, Police Operations Bureau, requesting council approval to receive and expend federal funds in the amount of five hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-four cents from the recurring National Highway Traffic Safety Administration grant to be used towards the following four primary traffic-related functions: traffic records, impaired driving and youth deterrents, selective traffic enforcement program, and occupant protection to include purchase of training, overtime, and equipment expenses for the period October first, 2025 through September thirtieth, 2026.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony for the, for the public? This is a recurring grant that we get every year and we much appreciate it. Uh, no objections. I mean, a motion to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, twenty twenty-five.
On page four, C two zero two five dash two-one-two, communication from Makana Rivera, Assistant Chief of Police Support Services Bureau, requesting council approval to receive and expend state funds not to exceed twelve thousand dollars from the State of Hawaii Department of Health, Alcohol, and Drug Abuse Division as reimbursement for the enforcement of Hawaii Vice Statute Section seven twelve dash twelve fifty-eight prohibiting tobacco sales to minors via memorandum of agreement two zero two five dash PB dash zero zero two effective September first, 2025 through August first, I mean, August thirty-first, 2026.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. And then twenty twenty-five dash two-one-eight, please?
On page five, C two zero two five dash two-one-eight, communication from Darren Rhodes, Assistant Chief of Police, Police Operations Bureau, requesting council approval of the indemnification provision contained in the nobility terms of use agreement to allow the Kauai Police Department's Epic Safety Section and Crisis Negotiation Team to use a software for digital note-taking and as a productivity application that supports efficient operations and collaboration.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, if there's no objection, I'd like to take twenty twenty-five dash dash two-two-zero out of order.
Chair, on page six, C two zero two five dash two-two-zero, communication from Council Chair Reposo requesting the presence of the county engineer to provide a briefing relating to the Poipu Road Safety and Mobility Project, specifically the proposed removal of trees along Poipu Road.
Move to receive.
Okay.
Before we get started, I am going to make a few comments and do a very quick presentation because I kind of want to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing. We've, we've been bombarded with emails and apparently there is a misconception that the council is considering removing the sidewalks or not building the sidewalks near Koloa School and that is simply not true. Not sure where that started, but it's not true. So I'm not sure how, how many testimonies we received, but it was a lot. So someone was told that the council is looking at stopping the project to protect our kids at Koloa School. That's not the case. This isn't about sidewalks versus trees. This is about a community input and preserving our rural character. You know, slowly by slowly, for those of you that have been here for any length of time, we have seen our rural character disappear slowly by slowly, one tree at a time, one neighborhood at a time. And you know, all of us, every one of us, everyone that ever runs for office, we always talk about keeping Kauai Kauai and we always, that's something we all say and then, but, but this is not about trees versus sidewalks. We're talking about the area where we did the site visit was by Kukuiula Store, that stretch that goes from that area all the way down to where the housing development is. And all I'm suggesting is that we, we accommodate both public safety as well as our rural character. That's it. I don't like it when people put people against people. That's not cool. There's a way to do this and, and both parties succeed. And we, as this council and the administration collectively, it's our obligation. It's our obligation to do what we can to preserve not just Kauai, but our, that rural character. And you know, Koloa is one area that's remaining. You know, we still get Ohana Pepe Town, we still get the old Kapaa Town, but pretty much everywhere else is starting to look like the mainland. And many of us don't want that to happen. I'm only speaking for myself. So I mean, I'm doing this real quick PowerPoint. If we can, if we can, is it up? I'm, I'm looking at myself on this screen here. No, I mean, sorry. Stretches that entire length of that roadway. And you know, we, no, let me just go through the presentation. We're here today because the administration is proposing that some of these shade trees will be removed. It's been there forever to make way for a new sidewalk. And again, it's not about saying we, we want the trees and no sidewalk. I think when we did the site visit, it was very clear from the community, they wanted to see both. That's what I heard. I'm not sure what the administration heard, but that's what I heard. But when you remove these types of rural character, these items, these, these trees, it threatens our cultural identity and natural beauty and more importantly, the public trust. These trees are part of that community. Whether you like them or not, they are. They have shaded generations, many of them are here. And shaped Koloa's, really, really shaped the sense of place. And removing them erases that living peace of Kauai's story, more importantly, Koloa. Mature trees provides natural cooling and shade. We set, we stood under those at the site visit. Thank God those trees were there, it would have all been baked. Clean air, stormwater absorption, you know, I, we didn't even talk about this at the site visit, but the stream is right there. When we remove these trees, you're going to impact the soil that abuts the stream, which erosion can cause larger problems for that area. We already know that we have some issues with drainage in that area. It's also a habitat for birds and other wildlife and losing that means hotter streets, less comfort, and long-term environmental costs. Questions I have and I'll be asking hopefully, hopefully our engineers will be able to answer, was an environmental or cultural impact study done? I know back, what, thirteen years ago now, Charliette did that whole program, a lot of the community participated, which was a good thing, but was that studies ever done? Were there alternatives to full removal of the trees? And is this consistent with our county's values? I, I don't think so. I don't think removing trees is. And you know, I looked at some of the reports that came out of those community meetings and if you look at this one here, this is just one of them, but there's several that say the same thing. And it, where that arrow is pointing, I don't know if you can see it, but it says, "No more removal of large trees unless, unless they're diseased." Now, the community wanted that. But, but, but today, we're here to discuss why are we removing these trees? In that slide, it also says more sidewalks that form a connected system, which we support. This council, I'm assuming I can speak for everyone over here, supports that. But that, that, I just wanted the public to understand that even back then, there was community concern about the trees. It wasn't something that came up when we did the site visit. Removing large trees is costly and we know that. Replacement trees take decades. I don't know how you would replant trees after you take, took them out. That, that makes no sense. And then again, I spoke about the cooling, the erosion, and the maintenance. I don't know if you guys drive around our sidewalks in the county of Kauai, but maintenance is always an issue. We, we, it's always an issue. Community and social impacts, and this is where I really, you know, this all started because I got called by the community members saying, "Hey, I just saw a bunch of trees with ribbons on them. Does that mean it's going to get cut?" And come to find out, yes. And I had requested a community meeting. The administration didn't recommend a community meeting, but they did agree to do a site visit. So I did the site visit. I invited the community members who come down. We had a very good, I thought we had a good discussion. I really want to say mahalo to the contractors who, that, those trees are supposed to be cut already. And good fellow construction, to their credit, I asked them if they could please hold off until we could get this in front of the county council and, and he obliged. So to good fellow, mahalo. Shade trees enhance mental health, walkability, and community pride, and removing them can reduce trust in local government, especially when the community told us years ago not to remove any trees. So my recommendation is real simple, pause the removal plan immediately. This is just the trees now, not, not Koloa School. So all of you that sent testimony, we're not talking about Koloa School. Conduct full community engagement, meetings, surveys, and hearings, perform a tree inventory and a culture assessment, develop an alternative sidewalk designs that preserve trees, and that can be done now. And I'll show some pictures. Establish a tree protection policy for future projects. Moving forward responsibly, collaboration over unilateral decisions, I think is critical in these types of community development. Balance progress with preservation. We need to do that because we're going to lose Kauai people. We are going to lose Kauai if we don't. Respect for our people, our history. canes, in a very unstable ground, but they came because it was important. And, and it's all about respect, respecting their input. We, we always say it, right? Politicians, we always say it, right? Hey, we gotta respect our kupuna. Who do we, who do I call when I have a question? I call the kupuna, and I do. And I think we all do. Let's build with the community and not over it, and I think that is the thing. So my closing message, real quick, and, you know, I, I know, I, so I'm gonna yield my time after the meeting, I'm gonna say everything upfront because I wanted to set the, the stage for the testimonies to come. I don't wanna hear people come up and say, "You're killing our kids," or, "You, you're making a dangerous area in Koloa by the school," because that's not what we talking about, although the majority of our testimonies came in about that. This is about shared goals and not opposing sides and putting people against each other. We all want safer, more walkable communities and a greener, more beautiful island. Sidewalks and trees are not enemies, they're partners in creating livable, healthy spaces. This conversation is about integration and not elimination. Progress with preservation is very simple. Progress shouldn't come at the cost of our island's identity. Can you imagine driving down Koloa, past the, the tree tunnel, and all you see is concrete and no trees? No, I cannot see that, and I cannot support that. We can modernize our infrastructure without erasing the natural and cultural treasures that define us. We can. The true progress honors our past while planning for the future. The opportunity for smarter design around the world, and even on Kauai, cities have designed tree-friendly sidewalks that protect roots and canopies on Rice Street. Drive down Rice Street, what do you see? You see beautiful trees planted in the middle of sidewalks. Rice Street, they're doing that big sidewalk going down to Nowiliwili now. Did they remove the telephone poles? Because, no, they built the concrete around the telephone poles. So please do not tell me we cannot do that with Koloa. With proper planning, Kauai can lead by example, showing how to combine safety, accessibility, and environmental care. And again, community voices matter. This isn't a fight, it's a chance for us to collaborate, find out what the community really wants, and accommodate what the community really wants. When people are heard, better solutions emerge, we all know that, it's proven time and time again, and when asking for partnership, uh, we're asking for partnership, not confrontation. To design a Kauai solution for Kauai people, not for tourists, for Kauai people. The bigger picture, it's not about concrete, again, versus the canopy, it's about the future of our Keke. We talked about Koloa School, we're not talking about that area. That area is long overdue to provide safe walkways for our Keke. That is not even in this discussion. Shade trees and safe sidewalks together make our communities healthier, more walkable, and more connected, and by protecting both, we show what aloha for our home truly means. Um, I did have some pictures, I'm not sure if we can queue them up, but this is just pictures that I took yesterday and today of Rice Street. And that, that's the new one, that's the new one going down from Rice all the way down, apparently I think it's gonna go all the way down to Harbor Mall, or wherever that, down there. But look at that. We didn't cut those trees. No, we built around the tree. You know why? Because that's important. This, look at this one. This is Kauai, guys, this is Rice Street. We actually put the tree around some grass around the sidewalk. And that, look at that sidewalk, how narrow the walking area is, uh, you know, and we're gonna hear about ADA and all of that, but we can make this happen if we want to. We chose not to. We chose to cut trees, and that was not a council decision, and it definitely was not a community's decision. We'll hear from the community. Look how pretty. We can coexist. We can. Look how nice it is. They didn't cut these trees down, folks. They built around the trees and made a very beautiful walkway. And this here is just some information I got from a constituent, where he talks about this specific tree. I call it the golden shower tree, the scientists call it something else, tabiboya, whatever it is. I call it the golden shower tree because it is golden, it is beautiful, and it is part of Koloa's culture, part of Koloa's heritage. But this just says that the root system on these trees are very, uh, they're not invasive, and they go straight down, they didn't go out. So if you read this, it says it's perfect for planting up against sidewalks. So why would we throw away an opportunity to put together the public safety, the convenience, as well as keeping Koloa's character intact? There is a way. While this council doesn't have the authority to go say, "Hurt, do this or do that," I am hoping that after today's and a testimony from the public that we, our administration will at least consider taking that segment out, redesigning it, and, and doing something like, like what's in that photo. That is my time. Thank you. Um, with that, we'll, we'll have the administration come up and do the, they have a presentation as well. I will suspend the rules.
Good morning, sir.
And Council Members. Troy Tanigal for the record. Michael Moore has a presentation that'll, uh, provide some details to answer some of the questions that came up about the trees, but before that, I just wanted to, you know, just say a few words about the project, you know, from kind of a 30,000-foot level. This project was born out of, um, input from the community. The intent of this project is to increase, uh, safety for all modes of transportation, automobiles, bicyclists, and pedestrians. And Council Chair is absolutely correct, you know. This project is about, um, putting in these improvements to better the community, um, understanding what existing resources they are, like the shower trees, and coming to a compromise. And so I think the presentation that Michael Moore has here today will reflect that. And so without further ado.
Chair, Members of Council, Michael Moore for the record.
Thanks for being here, Michael.
Thank you, Troy. Sorry, thought I pressed it.
I'm pretty busy with my office.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sorry, man. We're trying to get this far.
All right. Michael Moore for the record, Chief of Engineering. Um, I'm gonna run through a quick presentation about the project, and then specifically, as you requested, um, details about our efforts to preserve trees, um, plant new trees, um, and the handful of trees that will be removed, or proposed to be removed as part of the project.
You might have just begun, Mike.
Okay. All right, I'll try, try to, so, um, if we can get to the, get the presentation back on? Okay. Um, so we're just gonna go through this presentation, I'll click through, um, just talking about the, the project background, sort of how we got to where we are today, the long journey to this point. Um, go through the project scope and what we're doing to, among other things, as Chair mentioned, uh, provide a way for kids to walk to school at Koloa, Elementary School, and much more. And then lastly, I'll go through the tree, uh, protection, removal, and installation proposed as part of the project. So, the project location is Poipu Road, almost the entire length of Poipu Road, from its intersection at Koloa Town, at the gas station there in Koloa Town, down through the existing roundabout at Kukuiula Shops, and then east, um, almost, actually to the edge of the Hyatt. Um, it doesn't include the portion in front of the Hyatt, but it includes all of the rest of Poipu Road and county, county, um, jurisdiction. A little project history. Uh, the project was originally envisioned by the public at community workshops in 2013. Following that, it was adopted as part of the South Kauai Community Plan in 2015. Uh, we had some public meetings just before COVID hit, um, confirming the preliminary design. We met with resort property stakeholders, we met with the general public, and we met with other business interests like retailers and landowners in the area. So three specific meetings, one, of course, was a full public meeting. Um, there's been several, um, times that this project has come to county council, uh, for funding requests. Uh, we requested to apply for, receive, and expend, uh, federal funds, as I'll get to in a moment. Uh, we brought the traffic resolution to approve the, uh, things like the crosswalks and the roundabouts as required by county code. Um, I think we've had at least one other briefing about the project, I don't quite remember for sure on that, but it's been a while since we briefed council on this. Um, as I mentioned, we did apply for federal funds, we received a RACE grant, it's a competitive, um, grant program that the federal government does. It was called Tiger under Obama, Build under Trump, RACE under Biden, and again, Build under Trump. And it's, it's, um, essentially, it's the same program generally, initiated after, after the economic, during the economic downturn by President Obama, um, and changed a little bit throughout the years, but it's intended to do things that we're doing here, um, to provide ways for people to get around, to be sustainable, both from a environmental point of view and from a, um, travel point of view, and all of those things. So we received a $25 million RACE grant for this, uh, plus additional federal funds that, that we've worked very carefully with our, our partners at the state, Department of Transportation, to, uh, receive additional funds. In January of this year, we, we presented a project update to the Koloa Community Association. Um, we bid the project late last year, we had some delays getting to where we are today, trying to finalize a few property issues that we had to get to build a couple of the roundabouts primarily, um, and we are literally starting construction today. We had the blessing for the project yesterday. It's about a two-year project, a little more than two-year project, so we're looking at December 2027 protected end date, so it's gonna be a long time. We will be issuing many press releases and changes to traffic control throughout the project, and we'll be actively communicating with the public through press releases about, about that. Moving on, I wanna talk briefly about the, the May 2013 Community Design Workshop. Just, just summarizing, summarizing some of the, the meetings that happened back then, just because I think that it's really important to, to recognize the project came from the community. Um, this is, these are pictures from the original opening workshops and focus groups that occurred that week. Um, plenty of people engaged in these meetings, um, you might recognize some faces in some of these, these photos. Um, we had a walking, uh, two walking audits, actually, uh, one for the portion, um, in Koloa Town, near Koloa School, and the other, um, as pictured in most of these pictures, I believe, in the portion down by the resorts, uh, the east-west portion. And then we had a closing workshop with lots of turnout, as you can see here at the, in these pictures. Dozens of people came to those meetings and, and gave their thoughts and, and comments on how the project, um, should be, should be done. These are the original hand-drawn concept maps for the project, um, from 2013, um, remarkably similar to what the current design is for the project. Um, I won't walk through the details shown here, but the, there were a couple, there were a couple places where possible roundabouts were shown, where they're not in the project, and there was one location where, um, there was, uh, no roundabout shown at the gas station in Koloa Town, where we, where we are constructing a roundabout at this time, as already approved by county council. Um, everything else, the, the median locations, the, where the sidewalks go on one side all the way from one into the other project to the other, and on both sides for portions of the project, um, the, the extensions of the bike lanes, where those are included, the wide, the shoulder widening in some areas to add bike lanes, um, those are exactly the same on this, these drawings. This is the north-south portion with Koloa Town at the left and the existing Poipu Roundabout at the bottom right. And then here's one more image of the resort portion with the existing roundabout at the top left, going across to the Hyatt at the far, um, right of this, of this image. But this pretty much represents, um, what we were doing today. So I'm gonna jump into that here now, talk about the project scope. Um, we're just gonna, I'm gonna talk over this, this image. Um, there's three more slides that have the text that's shown on this image. Uh, Council Members, I believe you have those, you can follow along on the paper copies of those, those written slides, but I'm not gonna flip through those at this time. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to point out on this map to folks, um, what's occurring and what's described in the next three slides. So the project components, so we've got roundabouts. We have three, one existing roundabout now, the one at the, um, the, the bottom, I can point here for those in the room at least, right? Um, one here, the existing roundabout here at the Kukuiula, Kukuiula Shops. Uh, three new roundabouts are proposed, one at the top, Koloa Road with the gas station, um, one at the Kiokis area, Kino Plantation Drive, and one at the bypass road, Ala Kinoiki. Um, all, all three round, all, all three new roundabouts are, are included and will include, um, crosswalks and other features. Um, in the, in the resort portion, as we're calling it, or the east, let's call it the east, the east portion, the portion that runs east of the, the existing roundabout. Um, the, there are a few places currently that don't have left turn lanes for turning into some drive, some, some, um, either, not, not streets, I don't believe, but some, a couple of, of resort driveways, and we're adding turn lanes at those locations, uh, for vehicle safety and, and vehicle, um, just keep people moving down the road and not have to stop for someone making a left turn. As we come off a couple of side streets, uh, two of them, Capili Road and Ho'ovili Road, we will continue to have two lanes approaching Poipu Road on Capili Road, um, and on Ho'ovili Road, we will have, we'll add that, so we'll have two lanes. It's, it splits a little bit, and, and you can make a right turn as you're coming from Poipu Beach Park, um, with one or two cars stopped at, at the intersection, but with this addition, we'll be able to make that a little more easily in the future. Sidewalks, so as I mentioned, continuous sidewalk is, is proposed on at least one side of the street, the entire length of the project, and it'll tie into the existing sidewalk in front of the Hyatt, so effectively, the entire length of Poipu Road will have a sidewalk on at least one side. To me, this is probably the most key element of the entire project, is to make sure that our residents, Keke, kupuna, and visitors alike can all walk within the community to school, to the beach, um, to wherever they want to go along this, this busy roadway. There are some segments that will have sidewalks on both sides. I'll describe those segments here. One is on Poipu Road, we're extending the sidewalk that's near Koloa School, um, up to Koloa Road, and south a little bit as well, where we have room for it, down to about Blake Lane, just past the mortuary. Um, and then there'll be a crosswalk to carry everyone across the street to the other side. There's just simply not enough room in the right of way to build more sidewalks on both sides for that stretch on, on the, from there down to, um, the Kukuiula Market and Dive Shop. So at the, at the, at the Dive Shop and at Kukuiula Market, we'll pick up a sidewalk on the west side again, to allow people to walk from that little shopping center there, uh, down, past the bus stop, it's gonna have a new bus shelter, to the existing roundabout, and we'll have sidewalks and crosswalks all the way around the roundabout now, as opposed to just one crosswalk that's there today. Um, there'll also be sidewalk on, on, um, both sides, on the east portion, from the roundabout, all the way east to Kipuka Street or Veli Veli Tract. Um, past Veli Veli Tract, we have some vacant lots there on the north side of the road, and the sidewalk on the north side will, will end there at Kipuka Street. But the, the sidewalk on the south side will continue all the way to the Hyatt. Mark crosswalks, um, there's lots. So all the roundabouts will have crosswalks across all the lakes. The, um, I'm not gonna list every single place we're adding a crosswalk, they're on the list, it's just slotted in a few minutes here, I'll show this, the slide that shows the list, um, and it'll be, and for the record, the council has it. But we're adding crosswalks, pretty much one crosswalk at every street intersection along the project, and again, at some of the major driveways, um, to some of the larger resorts. And a couple, a few mid-block locations, typically where the sidewalk ends, for example, at Kukuiula Store and the Dive Shop there, um, and then just south of the mortuary, uh, crosswalks right where the sidewalk ends to get to the other side. The last couple items, leaving this slide up, um, bicycle lanes are proposed, the entire length of Poipu Road, uh, except for the portion fronting the Hyatt, uh, that's not part of the project, that area, it is just before that, about the re-bike lanes the entire length. Um, in the east portion, most of that area, the bike lanes will be buffered with a paint buffer between the, the cars and, and bicyclists. Um, the, the north portion, past Koloa School, um, down to the existing roundabout, the bike lanes will be more traditional, bike lanes are just a, a white line, there's just not enough room to provide a buffer. room to provide a buffer as well. Bus stops. There's currently bus stops in only the south and eastbound directions on Puaypu Road because the bus does a loop. It goes down Puaypu Road and then loops back up Ala Kina Wiki. Doesn't really stop except in Koloa Town. So the long-term plan is to actually have the bus go both ways on Puaypu Road. So for example, if you lived at Ko'aa'e Affordable Housing and you worked at the Hyatt, right now, to take the bus, there's no easy way to do that. You get on the bus at the intersection of Ala Kina Wiki and Puaypu Road, and you have to run up into Koloa Town and walk down or walk back, or go all the way up to Kalaeheo and come back down. So with this change, the bus will make a U-turn at the roundabout at Ala Kina Wiki and go both ways on Puaypu Road. So someone could very easily ride the bus from Ko'aa'e, for example, or from any housing in Koloa Town that's close to Puaypu Road to the Hyatt, go to work, and come back directly. So there's 11 bus stops total. The map shows them. The red ones are the existing stops. And one of those, two of those are being removed because they're being relocated to the other side of the intersection. But there will be bus stops, you know, one stop, sorry, three are being removed, one removed also at the top at Koloa Road and Puaypu Road, that one's being removed because there's stops nearby in Koloa Town. But just going over where the bus stops will be, there'll be bus stops roughly in front of Koloa School, just south of Koloa School, one on each side of the road. There'll be bus stops, one on each side of the road at Ko'aa'e Ma'kana Housing Development and Apartments. There'll be a bus stop, two bus stops, one on each side of the road, just north of the existing Puaypu Roundabout, so right near the gas station and across from the gas station. Sorry, fire station, not gas station, at the fire station and across from the fire station. And then two bus stops near the Kuna Plantation Drive Roundabout at Keokis, one on each side of the road. Two bus stops at Ho'ovili Road, so kids can, as they do now, I see them all the time when I'm in the area, take their boogie boards, their bodyboards on the bus, get off the bus, and then ride the bus back to where they need to go. And then lastly, there'll be one bus stop at the intersection of Ala Kina Wiki and Puaypu Road on the northwest corner of that roundabout. Okay, I'll move on to the next slide. These are the text slides that I just went through all this detail as I was talking about the, over that map slide. So I'll just click through those. And so I'm just going to go through a few images of the project, just to give a sense. These are from the plans. They're not rendered to be really easily readable for those of us that are not, people that are not used to reading plans like we as engineers are.
The way the posting was made, it was specifically to discuss the proposed removal of the trees on Puaypu Road.
Okay.
So I'm enjoying this presentation, I'm looking at the posting, and I think we are committed to what the post is, because I don't want this to turn into another discussion or debate about the entire project, simply because it's not posted.
Okay. The request said a briefing about the Puaypu Road project, and then continued to say, including, talking about the trees. So I thought you wanted a full briefing on the project, but, okay. Yeah, I only have a few more slides and I'll get to the trees. I'm just going to show some images of the project and the trees will be discussed next. So this is at Koloa Road. I'm not going to spend much time on these slides, honestly, you can see them. This is the proposed mini-roundabout at the intersection by the gas station to help control traffic there. This one was actually requested by council several years ago to be added to the project, and we did that. And you can see here sidewalks on both sides of the road going down from this intersection. The sidewalk on the east side, or the top of the drawing here, is existing, the sidewalk on the west side is new. This is near Koloa Elementary School. We did some work here recently already, but what's added is sidewalks going south of the school, including a crosswalk across Pa'na'au Road. And just to the right of this is the crosswalk crossing Puaypu Road, a few little ways down the road where that sidewalk ends. But this will allow kids to walk to houses on both sides of the road for a while and then cross over to get down to Ko'aa'e Ma'kana Apartments. This is at the Ko'aa'e Ma'kana Housing and at the Future Regional Park. So the road to the bottom left here is the Paka Pipo Boulevard intersection. Puaypu Road is left to right here, again, this driveway here is a Ko'aa'e entrance. This area here, the bottom of the drawing, is where the Future Regional Park is. We just received the plans for that. Kukui La is required to build that, and that's been submitted to us and to parks, and we're reviewing those now. One aspect here that I want to point out is that there is, in the South Point Community Plan, a plan to eventually put a shared-use path that connects on the old Kane Hall Road, east-west across the area between Puaypu and Koloa. And that path was built in part, shown right here, along the driveway entering Ko'aa'e Ma'kana, and the park project will build the next phase of it into the park and across the first phase of the park. And we're in discussions with Kukui La to connect that across, legally open, to connect that across to Ala Kalani Kamaka, hopefully within the next year or two. And go back there, real quick, there's bus stops here, again, on both sides of the road as I mentioned earlier. You can see one there, one there, with shelters, important features for that area. This is the existing roundabout. Key element here is that we're adding sidewalks and crosswalks around the entire thing. Currently only had, used to only have one crosswalk across the Y Road here, and we're adding the rest, and then again, two bus stops in front of the fire station and across from the fire station. This is at the Puaypu Beach Estates and Koloa Landing intersection. I've probably had more requests for a crosswalk here since I've been at the county than probably anywhere on the county roads. We get a lot of requests for this, and we're finally building that, and I'm really glad to be doing that. We'll be taking out the deceleration lanes and acceleration lanes that aren't really necessary on a 25 mile per hour road, and making that crosswalk narrow, relatively narrow crossing distance, and make that much safer for everyone, while maintaining the left turn lanes for turning into the Puaypu Beach Estates neighborhood and the Koloa Landing Resort. This is the Kuna Plantation Drive intersection at Keokis and the shopping center there. This is the roundabout proposed. We'll be talking more about this with respect to trees in a minute. But you can see roundabouts to control the intersection here. We get a lot of complaints about this one from a vehicle congestion and safety point of view, and we think that this roundabout will make that much safer for everyone involved, walking, biking, and driving. There are bus stops proposed just to the right of this, east of the intersection, moving the bus stop from this corner to both of the other sides of the intersection. At Ho'ovili Road, this is the road that goes to Puaypu Beach Park. We see the intersection there, turn lane, left and right turn lanes coming off Ho'ovili Road, left turn lane still into the road to Puaypu Beach Park. Crosswalk with raised medians to make that safe, and then again, bus stops on both sides. This is where I see the kids using the existing bus stop on the south side with their bodyboards, but they'll be able to ride the bus back a little more easily in the future. This is the last image of the project, Ala Kina Wiki and Pe'e Road and Puaypu Road Roundabout. This is where the bus will turn around, use the roundabout to turn around, and use the bus stop on the north side here to drop people off, they say, you want to go from here and then walk to the Hyatt for work. Currently, the bus stop is up here on Ala Kina Wiki. Let's jump into the tree protection removal installation part of our little presentation today. So we do, as you said, Chair, in the meeting, we do care about trees. We do care about the rural character, and through this project, we have been trying to protect trees. One thing we, of course, always do on any project is check the exceptional tree list, make sure there's nothing that's going to be affected on that list, but it's not just the exceptional trees. There is one exceptional tree on the project corridor. It's at the mortuary, it's in private property, and it's separated from the roadway by a rock wall. We don't see any issues with that one. We're building a sidewalk along that frontage, but much of that area is already paved in asphalt, and we're working on the other side of the wall from the tree. We did design the rest of the project in a way to protect other trees as much as we could. However, there were some trees we missed, and the reason for that was that this is a complex set of plans. There are, each segment of roadway has at least, is viewed at least six times in the plan sets. There's demo plans, demolition plans, erosion control plans, geometric plans, paving plans, grading and drainage plans, and striping plans. And what the designers do in these cases, they don't show the trees on all of these drawings because they clutter what you're trying to build. And so they're always shown in the demolition plans, but not shown in all the other plans. And during the review, we try to make sure, see where trees are being removed and make sure we're not building things to remove trees. But the one area, especially near Wa'komo Stream where the yellow shower trees are, we missed it. We didn't, those trees were not shown on the grading plans or the other geometric plans of what we're building, and so we couldn't see how the sidewalk related to those trees. And they were shown on the demolition plans in the grading area, but we should have caught it, we didn't. So honestly, we're actually glad that the community saw the flags that our contractor put out for their subcontractor to price the tree removal, so that there was attention brought to this, because we sharpened our pencils and we can save more trees than we thought we could, even though we were already planning to save as many trees as possible. So yeah, thank you to the public for encouraging us to take a closer look, honestly. I think that was an important element of this. And we did talk about trees during some of the public meetings, but of course, not at the level of detail that we are today. And that may be probably something we should have done, but we didn't do that. We did talk about trees, some of the larger trees, for example, near Keokis that we are proposing to remove. We did talk about it some of the public meetings. So we'll go to the next slide here. So there are some large trees that are proposed to be removed. I'm going to talk about those so the public is well aware of what are proposed to be removed. There's one monkey pod tree on the west side of Puaypu Road, about 200 feet south of Koloa Road. It's a large tree, fairly, not the largest in the area, of course, there are larger ones, but it's kind of cut in half. It's like a V-cut, because the power lines and communication lines run directly over the trunk. And so it's already cut like this. It's a large enough tree that it would be impossible to build a sidewalk on that side of the road without removing the tree. So that's, honestly, it's one of the bigger, the one I had the most heartburn about when we were planning this project, because it's a monkey pot, everyone loves the monkey pot trees, especially in Koloa Town. But I'll show it in a minute, and I'll talk about some mitigating factors to that removal. There are two large banyan or ficus trees, called both, I believe, at Kuna Plantation Drive near Keokis, one each on the northeast and northwest corners. So as I mentioned before, we're building a roundabout at this intersection. There, right now on those two corners, there are two, currently two large banyan or ficus trees on those corners, the northeast and northwest corners, so right at Keokis and then across Kuna Plantation Drive in front of the vacant lot there, there's two more. With the removal of these two trees, one on each corner, there would still be one large tree on that corner. And this intersection has two large similar trees on the south side as well, on each corner, one on each corner. So after the roundabout is installed, there would still be one large ficus tree on each of the four corners. My understanding is those trees, you know, they're not hundreds of years old, they were planted, if I understand correctly, around the time Puaypu Road was first built, and that area started being developed in the 1960s, or maybe later, but no, earlier than the 60s as I understand it. And lastly, I want to talk about the shower trees along Wa'komo Stream north of the existing roundabout. And I'm going to show some images of all these so we can really give a sense of what's what in a moment, but I'm just running through it in text first. We counted 48 trees in the county roadway on our survey. There may be a couple more, a couple less. I know there's at least one, when I went out there in the field and looked for it, it's just not there. I don't know if it got missurveyed, or if it was somehow removed or died since the survey occurred several years ago, but it's about that many, give or take two or three, I'd say. There's more trees that are beyond the county roadway, outside the roadway in some areas. So those aren't even on shore of our plans because we're not doing work outside the roadway in this area. As I mentioned before, the contractor flagged the tree, all the trees in the grading area for removal. And again, we missed this in our design review about all these being removed. But since you've asked, Chair asked, and public asked, we've taken a closer look. And the concept you started at the beginning, Chair, of wanting the rural character, I agree, 100%, we agree on this concept. And so we want to save as many trees as possible, and we missed these in our design. We believe, and I'll show you the details in a moment, that at least 38, possibly and hopefully as many as 44 of the estimated 48 trees can be saved. Not all these are shower trees, there's a couple that are different varieties. I'm not an expert in tree types. There are probably people here who are more than me, but I believe most of those, if all but just a handful are the shower trees. But regardless of type, we're trying to save them all, because any tree that provides shade to the sidewalk is a good thing. And so four to 10 trees will need to be removed with the design of the sidewalk that's in a much more context-sensitive and tree-sensitive way than the original design. So I'm going to go through these, those three areas that I talked about. So this is the, anything shown in green is an existing tree that's going to stay. Anything shown in red is an existing tree that we propose to remove. And anything shown in yellow, not on this image, but in the future one, are trees that we're not quite sure, because we just, the guy get in there and kind of lay out the sidewalk to see, and we'll be doing that within the next two weeks. So the red circle here is the monkey pod tree I mentioned before. If you look closely there, you can see that the tree overlaps the curb that's proposed on this side and the sidewalk. It's actually much bigger than that little, that bright red circle in the center there. It covers probably that entire sidewalk area, it's a large trunk. One of the things about this is that there are three other monkey pod trees on the other side of the road. Those canopies actually meet, this doesn't show it, but if you look at an aerial image of this area, the canopies of these three trees, this one on the west side and the two on the east side, come together over the road. And once this tree is removed, the trees on the other side will expand their canopies across the road a little more, and that shade will be, will over time grow from what it is after we take the tree out. This is the area at Kuna Plantation Drive. As I mentioned, on each of the northeast and northwest corners, there are two ficus trees that are, that propose to be removed to build the roundabout. But you can see there are two other ficus trees just outside of them. So you can see northeast corner where Keokis is, existing tree to be removed. It's located at the edge of the roundabout itself and in the sidewalk. The one behind here, we are saving. Over here, similarly, this one's at the back of the sidewalk, and there's a wall here as well that would make it impossible to save the tree, and that we propose to save this one back there. There's one other tree at this intersection that we may have to remove. This is another little design tweak we've done since the concern about trees. This sidewalk was built, it was designed in a way that cut into the bank, the slope here where these trees are situated, and so these three trees were originally flagged for removal. That was an easy fix. I mean, that sidewalk, we just missed that one too. I didn't realize those trees were coming out. But that, we don't even want, we don't want to cut into that slope at all. We have plenty of room to build that sidewalk without doing the expense of cutting that embankment, so we're not going to, and we'll just do the sidewalk out in front in the flat area. That sidewalk actually is going to go right about where the existing grass shoulder and bus stop is on this side of Puaypu Road. But there is one tree here that I show in yellow that is at the edge of the slope going down to this drain area, and we're going to try to save it, but because we're doing some work to extend this drain a little bit and redo this outlet of the drain, which is in not great shape right now, we may have to cut this out. But we're going to work with our designer to see if we can save that tree by changing the way that outlet of that drain is and the way the slope there is. Let's talk about the shower trees along Wa'komo Road now, and show them in imagery here. So this area runs, so when you're driving Puaypu Road and you're going down, you go past Ko'aa'e Ma'kana past Kauai Makana, you go past the section where you can see the Keuna Golf Course, and then you kind of divert away from the Keuna Golf Course and you're along Waikomo Stream. There are trees that pick up before this area that I'm showing here, but all the trees north of this spot are outside of the, the roadway. So we're not touching those trees. The left edge of this drawing right here is pretty much right where the entrance is to McBride Resources. So there's a, there's a building that's back there. I believe it was originally built to be this first sales office for Kukulua when they were developing initially. It's now, there's a big sign that says McBride Resources there. That's where they have their offices. And so that driveway entrance is pretty much right across from that driveway entrance where this first tree is on the left. And these 21 trees that are on our map in this area are in this, you know, a few hundred feet right here in front of vacant lots and McBride Resources office. These trees were flagged to be removed, all or most of them were, but we can save them all, we believe. There may be a couple that are a little close to the sidewalk, but we can narrow the sidewalk a bit and, and likely save those trees unless they're survey dots way off from where, where it's shown. To save it, what the plan is to do is we originally planned to have the sidewalk set back from the road with a grass strip between the roadway and the sidewalk in this area. As we try to do whenever we can to be further from, from cars. But we think it's reasonable and actually perfectly fine to have a curb, a normal curb with a sidewalk on top of it, similar to a lot of sidewalks we see around the island, to have that sidewalk be close to the roadway. We have the same design with the curb, the sidewalk on the curb next to the sidewalk in, through Kaloa Town, in near Kaloa School. There's, there's, there's areas where, as we go south from Kaloa School especially, where there's not enough room to have any extra space. It's just two travel lanes, two bike lanes, sidewalk on one side, property line. And then on the other side, a little bit of grass swale and a property line. And that's the same thing we'll do here. And, and it's not an uncommon design. We think it's reasonably safe. It's, and, and works well for pedestrians and saves the trees and provides pedestrians shade. Moving to the next slide, this is the continuing of the same area. So the, the leftmost image or side of this slide is that connects to the right side of the previous slide. This goes, these are the trees across from the first few houses, or pretty much all the houses that are located on the east, the west side, excuse me, of Poipu Road across from Waikomo Stream. There are several houses in that area. So there are approximately 24 trees in this area. Again, we've placed the sidewalk adjacent to the curb to save these trees as much as possible, at least in this first part here. You can see trees here that are three yellow and two red. At this particular spot, the stream is very close, is much closer to the road than other, than other areas. And we've kept everything as tight as we can to the west side of the road. But there are two trees that we believe would not be able to be saved at this location. They're shown in red. And there are three trees in yellow that we're not sure about. We're going to stake the sidewalk and find out, begin with in the next couple of weeks. The sidewalk's shown at five feet. It can be narrowed to four feet and still meet the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. It can be narrowed for short segments to four feet. It can't be narrowed the entire length to four feet, but it can be down to four feet and, and we would do that at these three trees in order to save them if necessary. So there are two, two likely to be removed and two, three possibly, but hopefully not need to be removed. As we move to the south, the, it changes dramatically where the, the stream ends up going much further away from the road. And here, for this stretch right here, there are seven trees where we, we believe you can put the sidewalk behind the trees. And we've already made that out. It'll probably won't be quite like shown. It's got to be a little closer to the trees in a couple of places because of the, where the embankment is. But we, we believe that we'll be able to fit this in here and meander around the trees as suggested by members of the public at the field visit a couple of weeks ago. And save those seven trees and have them be between the sidewalk and the road, which will be even more pleasant for people walking than otherwise. This next, sorry, this next segment here, there used to be the detention chamber, which is this kind of dark area here, this long rectangle, used to be further back. And it was behind the sidewalk. And I told designers, why can't we just put it under the sidewalk? And they said, sure. So we're going to do that. And that detention chamber, just to let you know, is to allow us to drain the other side of the road. Right now, there's not good drainage on the west side of the road in this area. And what happens is water comes down that side and it just flows across the road during a, a rainstorm. And this is a rainstorm that's not nearly big enough to cause Waikomo Stream to be flooded, but just enough rain over the course of a couple of hours to cause water to run off the vacant lots that are north of here. And so we want to pick up that water in an inlet here, bring it across the road in pipes, bring it to the detention chambers to allow it to infiltrate into the soil. And if that chamber overflows, the water would bubble out of an inlet here placed between two trees and go to the stream. And then at the very end of this drawing, at the south end here, this is right where our project transitions to allow for some on-street parking. You'll see more on the next page, where people do currently park for overflow for the Kukulua Market and Dive Shop Shopping Center. There are two trees here, one of which we think needs to be removed. It's, it's just too close to the roadway in part, and it's right at the edge of where the parking is designed. That's the red one there. This yellow one, we believe we can meander the sidewalk around it. We got to look a little more closely at that to be sure, but that, that's the goal on that. And just, just these three here I didn't talk about, but these three would be saved no problem. We, we pulled the sidewalk forward maybe two or three feet from where it was designed before, and we can save those side, those trees. Which one? Oh, the, these three right here, far, the three green ones to the, to the right of the drawing. Yeah. Sorry, you can't see what I'm pointing at, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, it's, I guess, if you're seeing it here, it's the ones right up here. Yeah, green ones here, three green ones. Lastly, this is the last image of the project. The, there are three trees located, two across from the shopping center. There's two green ones over here, and then one a little bit Maoka. And those three are, are, the one on the left here is supposed, proposed to be removed. In this case, there are actually many, there are three larger trees behind it in private property that we don't plan to touch. And this is actually a relatively small tree compared to the ones behind it. I believe this, this tree or the one to the left, I believe is not a yellow, a yellow shower tree anyway. But again, we're trying to save as many as we can of all types of trees. But this one, because of the way the sidewalk and the parking area is shown, is proposed to be removed. But again, there are three large trees behind it that would be saved. And these two trees over here, we haven't redrawn this yet because we're working with the private property owner. This line with a double dash is in it is the private, is the property line between our county property and the private property. And it's, it's a weird shape. And so we're working with the private property owner to, to get permission to make some adjustments in this area. They're actually doing some, some, some work in the area on their, their property anyway. And they're, they're already amenable to all of this. We just got to work out the details. But until we work those details out, we won't know exactly how this is going to be redesigned. But these will not be removed in the short term. And we have an idea of how we'll get around them, but we got to figure out how that land thing works first before we draw it. But we see, we see no problem with saving those two trees. Before I go to the next slide, I guess there, there's been some rumors, I, I haven't seen it personally on social media, but I, I've heard that there's people saying things like we're moving all of the trees in front of Keuna Plantation Resort. That was never shown on our plans. There were two, there were, well, there were, there were the three I mentioned earlier at, at, on the south side at the Kiokis Roundabout. And there were three others that, that were questionable because they were on the edge of the grading area. But we believe we can save all those trees. There's about, I don't know, 30, 40 trees lining Keuna, Keuna Plantation Resort. And all those trees are proposed to be, be saved. And there's a proposed sidewalk that's going to be in front of those trees. So those will all have shade throughout most of the day because the sun is more on the south side and those trees are south of the sidewalk. So that'll be a very pleasant section of sidewalk and we are not planning to remove all those trees. There's a couple other trees that were flagged in an area that we know we can save also. There are two large trees that are in front of the Poipu Beach Athletic Club. And those are in an area that's going to be a grass swale area between the road and the sidewalk. And those two can be saved and we have no problem saving those. But lastly, I'll talk about tree installation. The contract actually includes hundreds of trees to be installed along Poipu Road. And actually, it's like 623. It's a lot. I don't think we'll actually install that many, as we'll get to in a moment, but the contract literally has a bid add in for 623 trees. Most of the trees will be located likely in the median of the east section of the project from the existing roundabout to all of Keuna Wiki Roundabout. That's where trees can easily construct, be planted. There's potential that it's located other where, other, other locations also, like for example, on the north side where there aren't many trees at, at Keuna Plantation Resort, for example, across from the resort. So one of the things that happened during the design of this project, we, you know, with, with 368 sheets and a lot of complicated designs, just trying to get all the sidewalks to connect to the roads and make them ADA compliant, making sure the drainage works along with the road and sidewalks, it was very complicated. We, we kind of punted on the landscape design. We said, we got to get this project out. It's been 12 years already. We got to get it out. Funding's there, let's get it started. And so we have the plans for the hardscape. The landscaping design is going to be completed during the project. And so we will be moving towards public involvement and especially a resort owner involvement because the intent is to have the resorts maintain the landscaping. They, they committed to that a few years ago at, at meetings with them. We need to finalize those details, finalize the design so we can find a design of landscaping, including trees and ground cover primarily by going to the public and working with resorts to see what they can maintain. And we'll be doing that starting in a couple of months, maybe, maybe as late as early January, but, but we, we plan to, we, we will, we have to do that as part of the project. And we have money in there for landscaping with, at this point, like I said, 623 trees. I think they're kind of a smaller size. And once we've defined the design, more like it'll be difference in sizes for the trees. And if we go bigger, there'll be fewer, right? If you change, change the price. But that's, that is planned as part of the project. So we're preserving as many trees as possible and even more than we planned in our designs up until two weeks ago. And we're adding trees, significant numbers of trees in some areas of the project in the future. And that's all I have. Sorry, that was a long presentation, but I wanted to make sure that it was very clear what we're doing, what we're not doing. Because there's been a lot of rumor and, and various things batted about. And I, I know there's a lot of people here that, that will support the project and are very, and all, who are very concerned about trees. And I'm looking forward to hearing from, from folks if they choose to testify to you all today. But hopefully this is helpful for them to understand what we did initially and what we've done at their requests to do even better than we had planned initially. Thank you.
Yeah, this is significantly different from what was presented at the site visit. So, you know, I appreciate the work that you put in. I did have a couple of questions. Well, first of all, because you mentioned that this came before council numerous times for approvals. January 2025 was the Kaloa Community Association meeting. And then you also mentioned there were many, many, many community meetings throughout the process early on. But the shower tree removal was never discussed, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So I, I think that's important.
I said that.
Okay. That is important because you can have as many community meetings as you want, but if you're not letting the community know what exactly is being done, then it's, doesn't make sense. The other last question I have on page 31 of your presentation where you have the, the two red trees and the three yellow trees on that one span. And I think if I heard you right, I think you said that stream is very close to the, the, the sidewalk?
Yes.
Are you guys concerned or is, or should we be concerned because that, that stream is so close to where these trees are going to be removed? And I'm looking at the yellow in my mind as it being red because the, the chance of it going, I mean, I, I like when you say you're going to try to save it, but I got to assume the worst. If it's, if you, if we lose those five trees, is that going to impact the erosion of that portion of the stream bit? Because you're going to, that's, that's a span. It's not one tree. You're, you're removing all of that, those trees. Is that something that we should be concerned about?
Is it possible to bring that slide up and zoom into that area? We can talk about it if you want to do.
Page 30, 30, I'm sorry, 31. Assuming all of those trees are removed, does that impact the integrity of that bed, that soil?
Thanks for your question. I, I, so the, the, the embankment is, you know, it's an actual embankment with stone and, and very solid soil. It's not fill. So it's, it's, it's a stable embankment generally. Although it is too close to the road to put the sidewalk behind the trees, it's actually still relatively far from the sidewalk and the trees. So you're not going to see what I'm pointing at, but you can, I'll, I'll describe it and you can see it. So there's a, at the top left of the, of the drawing, there says top bank there. You see the third leftmost yellow tree?
Mm-hmm.
It says top bank. So that's the top of the slope of the, the embankment of the, of the, of the stream. That line continues. You see that little number 6905? It's just below that line where it says three dash tree, diameter equals two, that little line, that dash line is the top of bank. It's still approximately six or seven feet from the back of the sidewalk. Or maybe the narrowest spot, it looks like it's about five feet here. Sidewalk is four feet shown there, so five feet more to the bank, the embankment. So it's still fairly far back from the sidewalk here. And that's the narrowest spot. It's wider as you move away from that tight, tightest spot right there by the leftmost red tree. As I said, we, we do believe we can save these two yellow trees and we'll be confirming that in the next couple of weeks. The contractor, we were moving some of the undergrowth in this area as well so we can see this better and confirm all this. So we'll be looking at this more closely over the next few weeks to see how this is going to work. But, you know, there's, there's lots of portions of, of this embankment or this stream that don't have any trees at all along the embankment. And I, you know, we, we think it's going to be a, it'll be sufficient to leave it that way.
Okay. And then I, I, one more. I just wanted to show this one. This is on our right street where we built around the tree. Yeah, that one. That was the telephone pole. The next one, the one before that? Telephone poles, same thing though.
I mean, telephone poles are different because you don't have to leave any space for the tree to grow. Yeah, that's the one you want to talk about, is the tree.
What's that?
Telephone poles are different because you don't, you don't have to leave, yeah, I just looked at the tree.
I'm looking at this one, the tree. I'm assuming I'm seeing what's on here.
Yeah.
So I, I noticed there's, there's a little area around the tree stump. I'm assuming it's for growth. But I mean, is that a possibility on, for, for Kaloa?
We're leaving way more space than that on Poipu Road. You know, we're leaving, we're just putting the side, we're not, we're not, we're not wrapping it around any trees. We're leaving it in front of or behind to leave, to leave the tree with, you know, all but one side of the tree.
No, but I'm, I'm asking, what I'm asking is, on the trees that you have to remove, is it possible to do this?
Well, we have to have at least four feet around one side.
Okay.
And we can go back to the image that I was just showing, the two, the two that we're talking about, but there's, if we put four feet behind that tree, we'll be at the edge of that bank that I just showed. I said there's five feet from the back of sidewalk and there's about, so I, I think we'd be too close. By the way, this is a state project, not a county project.
It, it, I don't care if it's a state or county project. It doesn't matter to me if it's state or county. We're talking about the technology today, the ability that contractors have to build, save a tree and, and keep the sidewalk. That's whether it's state, federal, county, private, doesn't matter.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at it. I think that the problem in this case is that, I mean, honestly, what we would do is if we were to try to get around the tree, you got to keep four feet minimum for ADA at every location, right? Minimum. Minimum. That's required.
Yeah, I, I don't know. And maybe Red Street's got a variance, because I swear, somebody's, some of the.
I think there's four feet behind that tree.
Yeah, this one, but there's many others we could, but anyway, regardless. The fact, the limiting factor here for us is the four feet ADA.
Yeah. And so we, we, like I said, we, we'll look at that, see if we can put it behind those two trees. I think we'll be too close to the embankment for safety for people walking, for the, the two trees that are there. And again, it might be five, but I believe it's only going to be two. If we did it, we wouldn't do it like this with sidewalk on both sides. We would do it just four feet on the one side. But yes, we are, we, we are, we're trying to do this as much as we're able.
Okay.
And, but again, we're not going to split like that. We're just going to put it on one side or the other. Because once you have four feet, there's no point in having two more feet on the other side. The reason the state does this is they don't want to maintain grass between the sidewalk and the curb. So they paved the whole thing in front, even though the actual accessible, the pedestrian access route is behind the tree at four feet. They paved the front, so they don't have to maintain the rest of it.
Okay. I gotta, I gotta go with my tape measure, because I swear, some of those spaces was less than four feet, but that's just.
And on Red Street, there are places where we had, we did have to, where we were so constrained, we did have to go less than, than four feet.
Right. That's again, I mean, how, how was that? You get a variance or something? You get an exemption?
It's a long, long discussion to go through the ADA requirements.
I'm, I'm just saying, you know, if, if the intent is to preserve the trees, there is a way to do it. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, if it's technically infeasible, you don't have to meet the full requirements of ADA. And I, I don't know if they would allow trees, it's a de-cap question, if they would allow trees to be, make it technically infeasible.
What is de-cap?
Oh, sorry. The Disabilities Communications and Access Board with the state. They control, they, 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 they review our plans for accessibility purposes. And we want to ask them that question before we, we went through a, a technically infeasibility statement to go less than four feet around a tree. So yeah, we'll, 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 we're going to look at all that, that whole area. We're going to lay it all out with what's been designed and see how things fall with respect to the trees, the sidewalk, the embankment of the stream, to make sure this, it's safe, because we don't want the sidewalk to be too, too close to the embankment. And we want to save as many trees as possible for shade and for all of the reasons you discussed earlier.
Well, I appreciate the revisions you've done since the site visit, I really do, because it, that is a big difference. So thank you for that. Ms. Corden, you had some follow-up?
I had the same question you had. Could we wrap it around the sidewalk? So he answered it.
Any other questions for Ms. Holland?
Thank you so much, Michael. I really appreciate all the work that you're doing to adopt. One of the things that has been accused in some of the testimony that we received is that this project is either directly funded, requested, or a part of the expansion of Pinkston Developments, right, that are happening in that area? And I'm just wondering, you know, is there any truth to, to those claims? I, I just wanted to kind of publicly have some sort of answer to that.
So this project long predates Pinkston's involvement in his development on Kino Plantation Drive, which I think is the one you're talking about. Sorry, this, this project long predates, was, was planned and, and, and in design long before Pinkston bought that property and started developing it. However, there are development payments, including from Pinkston and other developers, that are being used as part of the match for this project. But we'd be building the project even without those funds. It just means we use less county money for the project. They're required by some of the years ago conditions of approval that were done for that land years ago. They were required to build improvements. And so some, including some of the improvements that are, that are related to this project. And so they, a few years ago, I think we came to council to receive, to ask for that, receive that money. They, they paid a sum to cover the costs of the improvements that the old development agreements for that whole area talked about for that particular project. There are other funds for development that are, that are, that are being used for this project. All those funds, I believe, are shown in the CIP budget. So that can be looked at and, and seen by anyone and talked about.
Just following up on those, the roundabout particularly at the entrance to that section by Kyokis?
Yeah.
Was that, or was that not specifically established at the request or the desire of Pinkston to have that? I'm just, just want to get that.
It was not. Thank you for asking this clear question. It was not. That was shown on the original drawings from 2013 charrette. It, it was planned long before he owned that property. Does it make it easier to get to those properties or exit those properties in the future? Of course it does. That entire, any, any property up Kino Plantation Drive will be safer. Any, any people leaving those properties, trying to access Puipu Road will be safer, because they don't have to do the tennis thing, watching cars go back and forth to pull out. They can just come to roundabout, yield to one direction, enter and circulate. And, you know, we've gotten lots of complaints about the intersection. And back in 2013, it was, it was very clear that that's where people wanted a roundabout. While it does affect and make that, that property safer, usually that property safer, it does so for all the other people that use that area, including, mainly including the existing shopping center at Puipu Shopping Village.
Thank you for answering that.
Ms. Corden?
I have a follow-up on that. My memory is that part of the conversation with the roundabout at Kiahune, and I will say, it would be nicer to not have those trees taken down. But part of that concern was emergencies if we had fires, and especially if we had a situation where there's a high wave event, or flooding, or fires, convergence. Because it's almost like, I'm just guessing the number, 1,500-person cul-de-sac up there. There's very little ways to come out. So that's an area I have a lot of discomfort over. I would really like, I wish there could be east and west roads out of that area. Because if we had a, a real crisis, I liked your expression of tennis court. I never thought that before. Left, right, left, right. But if people were trying to get out, if we had an emergency evacuation, having a roundabout would help the flow to get up and out away. And that was a big part of the consideration. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is. It certainly helps with evacuating that area. It's a, I mean, I, honestly, I, I didn't mention this earlier, but in the 2013 charrette, I was here. I was not an employee yet. I was actually consultant on that charrette. And it was after that that started the whole process of me being, coming to join the County of Kauai and moving to Kauai.
I was at that charrette.
Yeah. Thank you. And one of the things I did during that charrette, I, I had been to Kauai a few times before that, but I hadn't seen Puipu area that much. And I, I walked and biked around the area to get a sense of it. I was like, how is this massive area only have this one exit to the south? When you're at the north end of that, like in the Wainani subdivision, you're like, less than a mile from Koloa Town. But you have to drive like two and a half, three, three and a half miles to get out. I was shocked. It's just, it's kind of a challenging situation overall for sure. And especially given the fact that that one way, that stop, that stop-controlled intersection is challenging to get out of. And certainly, this will help with the emergency evacuation of that entire area. And I think it's an important aspect of, of that, as you said.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to plug. I have, look, there is a cane hall road from up there that goes over to Puipu Road. I hope sometime we can really look at that as a possibility to get out. Comes out right next to Kauai's Makana Housing. But there is a way, because I have a fear for that whole community, especially if we were having a tsunami or any kind of high wave event that could take out Puipu Road or that area. I'd love it if people could go lateral and inward without having to come all the way down to the roundabout. So just plugging that.
Yeah, good. That's a valid point, I, I will say.
Yeah, we'll, we'll end it with her plug, because.
Sure.
Yeah, that, we, we are focusing on this specific plan. So any other questions for Mr. Cavalio?
No, just following up on the, um, community part of it. Remember, when it all started, then we assured, and I'm clarifying, that every step of the way, we made sure community was involved in, in understanding. Some may not have, but now clarifying the, not removing all the trees. There may be some based upon what was just shared today. But the bigger picture was the layout, right? And so I just wanted to clarify that nothing was done without informing the community every step of the way.
Yes, we, we've been involved with the community all, all the way through. But as we've discussed already in this meeting, we didn't go to the level of detail with trees as we are today.
Yeah.
And, and I'm, and I'm glad we're doing it, honestly. But yeah, we, you know, there's, it's hard to think about, you know, there's a whole lot of other details on the project that we didn't go through either, like exactly how the sidewalk ties into this road and.
Right, right, right.
And how the drainage works. There's just a lot of detail that we didn't do. And, you know, lesson learned. We probably should have gone more with, treat, more dis, tree discussion earlier in the project. And I'm glad we're doing it now.
Thank you, Mr. Quin.
Just following up on his question. On your last slide, right, 33, you had those bulleted items. You talked about the 623 trees that we'll be adding, and that most of them are smaller size. But then you also talked about the landscaping design to be completed during the project. And then you said, "public involvement plan for landscaping design." So do you have now projected future dates that are coming for the public to participate in? Or is that still a ways off, or?
We've not scheduled those yet. We, we wanted to get to, get this project started and start on the hardscape. With everyone involved knowing that the landscaping design is going to come during the project, it's kind of the last thing you do, if you think about it, and it's a two-year project. We've not scheduled the meetings. We will be scheduling those meetings. We're, we're in discussions right now about, about who at the county is going to be coordinating those meetings and managing all of that.
So I think at some other place, you said it's potentially a two-year project. So will this part happen with, at the halfway point, at the three-quarter point, or?
Well, well, I, I think we'll be, I'm, my plan right now, I'm not sure we'll be able to kick it off this year, but I suspect that we'll be looking at early next year for the meetings and discussions on the landscaping design to start, so that we can get that done in time to build it during that two, two years and two months timeframe that the project is supposed to be.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Yeah, and I would just suggest that we really work hard with the community involvement on that landscaping plan. And please do not put that ugly grass that they put on this Hardy Street median that grows long and so hard to maintain. Let's keep them tight. I mean, even if the hotel, even if the hotel going to be, hopefully, they're going to maintain them. That's some ugly grass we got on there. And, and just keep it nice. And, and for our, for our employees or whoever's going to maintain, something that's easily maintained. Because no matter how nice you make that sidewalk, when you get all that overgrowth, which is common here in Leahui, it's not pretty. It's, it's not our rural character.
Yeah, but that ugly grass is a native grass, but it's hard to maintain, for sure.
There's other native grasses that we can use that's not going to be ugly. So anyway, uh, thank you very much. And I really, again, I appreciate the, the revisions Troy and Michael and all your team for, for, uh, for what has happened since the site visit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll be here if any questions later.
Yeah, please don't leave. Uh, you know what? I think we're going to take the caption break now, so we don't have to interrupt the public testimony, because we gotta do it at 10:30. So we'll do it now, and then we'll come back. And hopefully, if you haven't signed up to testify, please do so, so we can have some, we can get through it as quick as we can. All right? With that, we'll take a 10-minute reset.
The beauty of Kauai, as we all know, are our trees and our flowers. Why would we want to put so much away and cut them? And we lose our nickname, the Garden Island? We might as well go to someplace on the mainland like Portland, Oregon, and see all the cement that you have there. We don't need all of that. We're a small community. It really, it, you know, I'm here for the shower trees. I don't want any of them to be cut because they were put there by someone. These trees are not indigenous to Kauai or Hawaii, but somebody had the gall to go out there and plant these baby trees. And now they're huge and they're beautiful. I don't know if you've come down when they are in bloom. It's gorgeous. And so that is the, like, the gateway to our Poipu area, where a lot of our tourists go for the crack and, you know, the tour things that they get there at Kukulua Store. But I wouldn't want to see the trees, any tree, removed. I'm sure that with all the technology that we have today, that something can be done to save all of them. Not only, oh, okay, we gotta take these two away because they're too close, you know? It scares me with Waikomo streams. If we get a big rain and that stream carries a lot of water that goes down to the outlet of Koloa Landing, without any of that root coverage, I know the roots go straight down, but, you know, they're not only going straight down. You underneath to look at the roots are straight down. They travel. They're holding up that bank, to me. But I don't have any of that training, but maybe I'm talking on two sides of my mouth. But we've got to save those trees. And another thing, we worry about the safety, the safety of our children, the safety of the guests that are coming. I have been fighting for a crosswalk down at Honi Road and Leuai Road to come across to Kukulua Shopping Center. And Lisa and I have been waiting. I'm 18th on the list. Tell me, we've got 18 crosswalks on the island of Kauai that need to be painted in. Can you not paint one every day and be done in 18 days? I mean, it doesn't make sense to me. There's only one crosswalk and it's up by the roundabout. Now, the people are coming over Ho'onani Bridge from Koloa Landing, from the condominiums and the Sheraton Kauai.
I gotta stop you because of the time limit.
Okay.
You get to come back for three more minutes after we go through the cycle.
Oh, you stopping one part of you from talking?
I know.
Oh, my God. So, okay.
I let you go on for like 21 seconds and I, yeah.
Okay. Well, my main concern here today is to save as our trees. We can put in the walkways. That was not an issue. That was not an issue, is the trees to be saved. And I say, if I did not notice those pink ribbons on the trees today, we wouldn't be here talking about trees because they would have been gone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, any questions?
No, we're good, we're good, yeah.
I thought you guys needed a little humor.
For those that don't come, and by the way, you'll be up here next meeting for the, she's being nominated for the Historic Preservation Commission. God bless that commission. So, the way we work, you come up for the first time, you have three minutes, and then you'll see the yellow light letting you know you have 30 seconds. I apologize, I should have said this first. When it's red, like it was for Julie for 21 seconds, then your time is up, but you can come back for a second round after everyone has testified for the first time. So I appreciate that. All right, with that, next.
Rupert Rowe, followed by Fran Tucker.
Name Rupert Rowe, the Po'oh of Kaneholaumahe'ao. We have a serious problem in that area. Let's not be talking about making sidewalks. Let's talk about the fire station in the mouth of the river. That station is flooded every time it rains. Why is the county letting that happen? The fire station was supposed to be above Koloa Park. And then it was moved down into the county property. There was the county base yard. So now, when you're talking about this sidewalk coming down and cutting the trees, where's the drainage plan? The county, the engineer right here? We've been asked him. Second thing, down the road, Ho'o'uli Road, is an illegal road. It was created in 1960 when Vidina gave up the shoreline from the Waiha'i to the Sheraton. So they could move Keahuna and Waiha'i to the ocean. That was for tourism back then. But there's a serious problem. Where's the drainage? The county cannot use the he'ao as a detention basin. Who deprives us on our legal right, our customary and traditional rights as Kanakas? I came here today to correct the problem. I've been asked, Troy, five times, I asked him, I'd like meet with him. The Parks Department show up? The Fire Department show up? The State Department show up? Public Works, where you stay? You don't even show up. I call your office, you don't even return the call. This means you're not important. Got a problem. Ho'o'uli Road was the 106 for that road. Mike D. Healy gave you guys a warning. That was an illegal road. The over and under Eastman was there in 1965 when he went across into Weliweli Track. That's the legal road, not the road going down through the park. He gave you guys a warning, but nobody paid attention. Now, I'm here. I'm 84 years old and all this bullshit that happening on the south side not gonna continue. So when I come over here, I talk like this. Hush, why I gotta do that? You guys know I correct the problem, especially the, well, Public Works? Where's the drainage plan? So I got legal counsel. I get three legal counsel out there waiting for, take you guys on.
I gotta stop you there. You can come back on your second run.
Okay, I take three minutes.
Thank you.
I literally pulled a ghee.
I think we might be in the majority today over here, I don't know.
Fran Tucker, followed by Mariene Murphy.
First of all, I just want to thank the council for hearing the community's concerns and objections.
Can you just state your name for our captioner?
Yes, thank you. My name's Fran Tucker, and I live at Waikomo Stream Villas condominium in Koloa. And I want to especially thank Chair Reposo for meeting with the public the other day, and to Michael and his group for being there to talk about the things that are concerned to us, which are the trees. The trees are, they are beautiful. They do represent the Garden Island. And it's what visitors want to see. It's what local people want to see. And I'm very grateful to consider myself local after, you know, 13 years full-time and 26 years as an owner here. So my desire, my appreciation to Michael is that he did hear the concerns, and we saw some of those changes represented today in his remarks, and I thank him for that. My hope is that before any trees are taken out, and I noticed the blessing was yesterday, I hope I don't see trees coming out today. Because I think it's easier to leave a mature tree than to take one out and then replant it maybe when a new landscaping design is decided on. And, oh, wait, that tree would have looked so nice there. So if the design goes to these trees, if it can really be thought out carefully and let the trees stay in until the design is finalized. And if indeed a tree has to come out for some, you know, reason that is reasonable, then it's going to be more acceptable to those of us who don't really want to see any trees out. So that's really all I have to say, except a personal thank you to Michael because I did confirm that there's going to be now a left turn lane into Waikomo Stream Villas, and I am so grateful to that. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mariene Murphy, followed by Jodi Asquena.
Aloha, Kakayaka. I'm Mariene Murphy. I represent the Kauai Outdoor Circle, as well as I'm Vice President of The Outdoor Circle. I am also a certified arborist and a registered consulting arborist. I am here, obviously, to support the trees. I have a couple of things that I think are really important. One, we have to stop calling them shower trees. They are not shower trees. They are yellow trumpet trees, if you want to have a common name. But the shower trees are on the Koloa Bypass Road. They are not here. And it's, the public is very confused about this. They keep going, what's wrong with those trees? So please, in all of your documents, call them the yellow trumpet trees. We are, these trees are on a federally funded designation scenic highway. Enough said about that. Also, over the last 16 years since they first started looking at this project, there have been many, many developments involving trees and sidewalks, and how to protect the trees, and new kinds of sidewalks. I strongly encourage all of you to get arborists involved. I do not believe that an arborist was even consulted back 13 years ago. The county doesn't have an arborist on staff. Why wasn't an arborist consulted? In the very beginning, we could have saved the county a whole lot of money for this. So, also, my next question is, is there a tree protection plan for, that's going to be included in the landscape design? And when you talk about 260 trees included in the new plan, my guess is that that includes an awful lot of shrubs, not trees. So I'd like to know what the count is on the trees. I would also really like that whenever any kind of issue around the trees happens, that the Outdoor Circle is consulted. We've been around for 100 and, what, 115 years? And nobody bothered to contact the Outdoor Circle. So, I want to thank you in advance. You gave this best presentation now than anybody could, so.
Yeah, but I called them shower trees, I'm sorry. I stand corrected, I stand corrected. Thank you.
You aren't the only one calling them shower trees. Nobody's called them trumpet trees.
We need an arborist to point it out, thank you.
Next speaker.
Jodi Asquena, followed by Maryann Martin.
Aloha, Kakao. My name is Jodi Asquena, and I am a tree fan. Any tree that is cut down without a solid reason is a loss for Kauai, for Hawaii, and for the planet. I live right on Poipu Road and look forward very much to the blossoming of those yellow trees. When I saw there was a pink ribbon tied around the trunks, I wondered about what that was for. Surely, they wouldn't cut them down. When they're in bloom, the ones in Hanapepe and Waimea, also in flower, it's such a delight to witness the vibrancy of those brilliant golden flowers. I urge the County of Kauai not to cut down any tree that is so enjoyed by the general public, and certainly not the yellow ones on Poipu Road near the roundabout. I have a little thing to say about the roundabout on a side note. I live on Poipu Road, and I drive that road and go past that roundabout two, three, four times a day. I hope that when you do the roundabout near Keokes, that you consider not putting a sidewalk directly off the exit from the roundabout. I'm from England, I've seen roundabouts going, that, England is a country of roundabouts. So, when you are on a roundabout, if you stop for somebody in that sidewalk, the cars are piled up behind you. On a roundabout, you cannot often, you know, stop right there. It causes a clog. So I just wanted to say, a little bit like that happened this morning on the way here, coming through Maluhia Road onto Kaumualii Highway. There was a big traffic jam there. I apologize for being late. And I thought to myself, when I'm driving through those trees, is there anything closer to heaven than driving through the tree tunnel? Maybe you could just sit back under a beach chair under one of those trees with maybe a local guy playing, maybe Paul Togayoka playing Bill Zatkey music over there. Could there be anything closer to heaven? Keep the trees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maryann Martin, followed by Sandra Quinssot.
Yeah, it's on, it's on.
Aloha, my name is Maryann Martin, and I'm here representing myself. I've been a resident and lived in the Poipu area for 25 years. And I have a question about the theory of roundabouts, and do they really help with the flow of traffic? When there's no rush, of course, it's beautiful. I do see how that big Kukulua one works. But during evacuation, nothing worked. You couldn't get through the roundabout. It was full of cars. All three evacuation routes out of the south shore by the time we were told to leave was completely backed up. So, my understanding is that that Kuku, the Keokes Roundabout is there to help the flow of traffic. But if that development is almost near Koloa, are they not at a high enough level already? Why are we evacuating that property down into the Poipu area, which ties into this tree situation? Because those two trees at Keokes intersection, if you're driving from Poipu Road in or from the bypass road in, it's in the heart of Poipu, and it's gorgeous from whichever direction you come. It's shade, which is so appreciated in the sunniest side of the island. And we sent a ton of money over to Lahaina to save that one banyan tree in Lahaina, and we're going to take down those two big beauties. I'd just like to see some real thought put around that roundabout and in the thought of what you said about evacuating and these other alternative routes. Because if we're designing the roundabout for that development to get out smoothly and not do this, I argue in an emergency, that's the wrong direction to be heading. And on the shower trees, seriously, look at those.
Trumpet, trumpet trees.
I called more Lonikai Outdoor Circle because I used to live on Oahu. And I stand corrected, those ones that are nearest, the top of the, closest to town, the three or four others, where I just learned how to understand those blueprints, it is coming very close to the bank of the creek. And I did a lot of studying of these trumpet trees, and their root system is super good next to sidewalks, very solid, very dense, and might be the only thing holding up that bank near town. And you've all seen what happens in Koloa Town. We haven't had any water. Water's been turned off down on the south side. All the creek beds are growing in. We're going to have to do some serious clearing out of those stream beds and figure out why there's no water flowing there. Hopefully, they didn't turn it off just to do this roadwork. But anyways, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Sandra Quinssot, followed by Tessie Kinaman.
Aloha, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Sandra Quinssot, and I represent myself as a member of the community. Thank you for hearing us this morning and for that site visit that we did last week. I think we have come a ways from that, that visit. And to what I've heard this morning, I am really glad to have had people here to speak on behalf of the community, speak about the problems we have in that area, and for you all to listen so gracefully and help us to bring this declaration. So I just want to say thank you and support the keeping of the trumpet trees because they are beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last registered speaker is Tessie Kinaman.
You don't have the thingy anymore, so I'll just pass these. Tessie Kinaman for the record. Good morning, Chair Reposo, council members. Chair Reposo, I like your trees sticking out of the sidewalk. And these pictures show in front of Leuai Beach Resort, where we don't need, there's no curbing for the sidewalk and the pavement. So I'd like to see something like that along the project site. And no plant grass, because the county can keep up with it no matter how, you know? I mean, we, I mean, we're so used to with the guinea grass on the riverside, so that's green enough for me, you know? But, sorry about that. So, as far as the trees, I think we could pretty much maintain a lot of them, keep a lot of them there. And probably, I'm an engineer, but the road could be on the western side, could be elevated a little bit so it drains better, you know? And I think it'd be really nice to have the walkway for, I see a lot of mothers pushing their strollers. And, you know, a lot of times they have to get off the road and go in the grass, and it's kind of rough. So I appreciate the improvements that's going to be happening there. But do save the trees. They're an asset to the community. And I guess with the new improvements, probably the traffic lines would delineate where the bikeways and the walkways are going to be, as long as there's no parking along that area, except where the dive shop have their business across the street, where they store their boats and cars. But other than that, save the trees. I like your idea of, you know, showing that state project with the tree planted in the sidewalk. So I'm sure this could happen too along the stream. Thank you very much.
Council Chair, there are no further registered speakers.
Anyone else wanting to come up for a second? Oh, we got somebody else, all right, for the first time.
Sorry, I didn't know, I didn't like to sign up, but.
Lonnie? You just got to state your name for the captioner.
Rata. Good morning. Aloha, Chair Reposo and the rest of council members. My name is Napua Okano. I currently reside in Lihui District, where I grew up in Kalahe'au. As teens, we literally lived down at Poipu Beach. My dad worked at the base yard, which was mentioned earlier, is at the location where the fire station is. So I have a deep interest in keeping an eye on Koloa and what goes on there. We might not have control over expanding golf courses, shoreline hotels, or luxury homes that overshadow the existing residential properties in the district. But we can appeal to the county council in hope that they listen and consider our suggestions. I'm here to join the others in keeping the yellow trumpet trees. And I'm going to skip over everything what everybody else said and just get to my two suggestions. If monies are specific to this area and unchangeable, then widen Poipu Road in that area, on both sides of the road, so all trees can be spared. It was said, don't cut the trees, move the road. Yes, move the road over to the east and let the west shoulder become a combination bicycle-walking path. Why? Because all the homes are on the west side. Because the store's on the west side of the road. And at least six properties along the western shoulder have rock walls already in place along their property lines. So why not use this to your advantage? These rock walls could serve as a border to the sidewalk. The road would be wide, marked, shared, and most important, trees spared. A win-win for all. The second suggestion is, if monies are available specific to this Waikomo area but could possibly be re-appropriated, then delay the Waikomo sidewalk. Don't start there, but continue the sidewalk from Koloa School. Picture the current situation. Sidewalks are available from the intersection where the new roundabout is going to be, down to Koloa School. No sidewalks from Koloa School down to Kauai Makana Housing. Sidewalk along Makana Housing and no sidewalks past Makana Housing. So for a very short distance in front of a bar thread, mature, the road is shared because there are bicycle paths that are already marked. So that road is shared, so that means it's okay for the county to share. So, let's continue the sidewalk from Koloa School down to the roundabout. Pick up where you left off. That's all I got to say. So doesn't this make sense?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Oh, okay. Anyone else for the first time?
Actually, I just want to take the time to thank all of the neighbors with their love as much as I love our island. To see them all here is just heartwarming to me. And thank you for listening to us. And we hope that we can get our trees to stay where they are. And forget about hoppa trail to make that a road because that's going to be a whole bunch of trouble. So, but, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else want to speak for the second time?
I'm not going to be invited. Anyway, there's a serious problem on the drainage in that area. Where the trumpet tree is, the road that is there now is almost as high as the river that is going down. Anything along that way will affect the fire station. That is your first responder. It should be placed back on the top as an emergency. You cannot have the fire station become a handicap. Now, getting back to Kaneholaumahe'ao, we cannot use the culture site for the private sector to dump their water in there. I testified in front of Land Use Commission, and they told the landowner to present a drainage plan. From the fire station to the he'ao, there's all detention basins on the other side of the road. But soon you come to the he'ao, the county is giving permission to use the he'ao as a detention basin. What's going on? So now, Grow Farm has to provide a drainage plan too. Because Grow Farm will dump their water in Kanutzen's property. So all of these little things that are taking place over there, we are passing development in this area. I can see the development coming. I can see the development coming, but I cannot see the drainage plan. They make the sidewalk come down, but they don't talk about the drainage. The drainage is affecting the fire station. Let's put our cap on our head and know that is a serious problem. Let's not bypass and go start making sidewalks. Let's move the fire station. It's an emergency. It should be where it was to begin with. The reason it came over there, because on this island, that's the only station with a leather truck to fight the structures that are three-story high. That's why the fire station went there. I was the first guy that stayed in that station, but we were also surprised that the county moved the station to where it's at. We testified at the hearings at the station saying that we should not be down there because we're in the flood area, but we went down there. So now, there's a serious problem. That is a problem that should be taken care immediately.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else wants to testify? If not, I'll call a meeting back to order, any final discussion? Councilor Holland?
I have a question, and you can tell me if it's, wait. I have a question, you can tell me if I can ask it. I see Solomon Canoho in the back corner. When Marianne asked a question about evacuations, I just, since this is a bit on the boat, I just wondered if those roundabouts did in fact completely congest that we had?
Yeah, I would.
Don't ask that now.
Probably not within the, the scope of the agenda, but you can send that thing over to them, because that is, that is an important question.
Because it's a tremendous expense that we're putting in to build all this, and, you know, I wanted all the work, but if, if there's a, if there's a serious problem, I know I'm kind of passionate about.
What I would say is that, I guess, for the Fire Department or Kauai Emergency Management Agency, that they would be in consultation with our engineers to make sure that all of that has been addressed.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this body doesn't have the authority to rewrite the plan, but it's definitely, it did, it did, we shouldn't be surprised what Marianne said, that when everybody's getting into the, around the body, it'll be just as clogged as any other road, so that's something that they can work.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it will be better than what it is now, that's for sure.
Anyone, any other final discussion? Councilor Holland?
Yeah, I, I want to say a few things. I really, I really want to start with thanking the community for showing up, because it's really important to have you all here, and I think you should put it on your Wednesday agendas to come more often. So, thank you for all the testimony. You know, we received, I tried to do a count this morning, we received 44 emails asking us to please not delay this project because of the critical need for sidewalks in that area, and then 29 asking us to please, you know, rethink this plan for the trees, plus a lot of other comments and a lot of social media engagement around this topic as well. You know, I want to say that I do think that this is a wonderful change, and I really appreciate our engineering team for like sitting down and going through this again and trying to figure out how do we save as many trees as possible. I'm hopeful that we can save, you know, almost all the trees, if not all the trees, and I really want to thank our team who's worked so hard for this project to go through for, you know, over 12 years to try to get these things going, and then now at the completion of all this, the contractor's been hired, everything's moving forward. To make adjustments at this late in the game isn't easy for our team, and so I really thank our Public Works team for, for trying to really accommodate the need. I think it's really important as we look forward collectively as a community, how do we plant appropriate things in this area for the long-term vision? What do we want to see in 30 years, in 40 years? How do we establish some native trees and flowers along that area, thinking to the future? And this, this development actually gives us an incredible opportunity to think about what we want those paths to be lined with and what we want them to look like in the future. And so, you know, ideally, we can save as many as possible, and I, I would just encourage that if any are removed, that they are replanted specifically and intentionally. I think we do absolutely need more arborist engagement, and that's been a problem on Kauai for a long time. The drainage issue that we have in that area, both along those trees and in the wider Poipu area, is very, very significant. And, you know, I've had the opportunity through some of my consulting work as an environmental scientist to interview some of you, Auntie Julie, Uncle Rupert. I've, I've got many opportunities to ask you guys questions about your childhood in that area and the excessive drainage issues that we have. And I, I think part of the problem that we deal with is our engineers and our project managers and, and these projects that happen are all individual and, and come in and they're looking at their one project, but really, we have a broader issue of Poipu and Koloa really having, you know, unchecked development into, from the 60s through to the 90s, where we watched, you know, the decimation of a lot of those agricultural ancient systems and the movement of water through that area. And so, we have a much bigger problem of that whole area, and, you know, Uncle Rupert's absolutely correct about needing larger drainage plans. So, wherever possible, I do encourage our county to look at that and, and to really manage that erosion and to think about the water movement in that area, because the flooding is just getting worse, and all of these issues that were brought up today are, are very significant. And, and last thing I want to say on this is just, as a personal note, I also love those trumpet trees. They remind me of the jacarandas from when I went to college in Australia, the purple jacarandas, and so I also really enjoy to see them, and I'm, I'm really thankful that the county is doing everything they can to preserve what we can. So, thank you everyone for being here and, and for all of our team for such hard work.
Councilor Holland?
Okay, so, I, I don't want to repeat too much of what she said, but I do want to thank pretty much everyone in the room. Definitely the activated community, I hope you see that it made a difference. You made a difference. I want to thank the chair for placing this on the agenda and putting all the work in that you did. It's really made a difference. I want to thank our Public Works team for adapting to save as many trees as they, they think that they possibly can. I also want to thank Goodfellows for holding off on the removal. So, that was very good. I want to reflect what we've heard, and I agree wholeheartedly about, you know, causing the community to look like the continental United States, you know? And even in the continental United States, every, all those communities don't all want to look that same way, right? Not everybody wants to be, you know, five lanes and a lot of asphalt and concrete. So, I, I appreciate the comparative to like other islands, like, look at Kihei, it used to have a lot more character than it does, and even Puhie really, you know? So, that's important to me. I want to speak to those five trees along that thin area of sidewalk. I, I appreciate the challenge and the importance of wanting to have somebody who maybe is on a wheelchair or being able to get their double stroller down that area, but as a north shore person, that where we have everything wash away, I understand the difference of when you tear out the trees. So, you could tear out the trees to put the sidewalk, but if the flooding is such that it will simply undermine that sidewalk that's placed there, that's something I think that's very important to look at, and maybe they have to do something to the embankment to keep, if they take, you know, one or two out, so it doesn't just go right underneath the sidewalk and run it away, underway with that. And I do, when we're looking at all the roadways in there, I appreciate Uncle Rupert's bringing up Po'ouili Road because, I don't know, for at least half the time I've been in office or more, that has been raised as an issue. And so, just echoing a little bit what Councilmember Holland said, a challenge is that we look at everything in bits and pieces as those issues come up, year, one year, one decade, the next decade. I really want to thank, again, Public Works for the 13, 12 years of effort on this. And, but the, the drainage is a big issue, and we do need to figure out how, it's kind of sideways to this conversation, but I just will, will appreciate what Uncle Rupert shared, that we do need to look at that drainage. So, thank you all, and thank you again especially to the Public Works for coming up with a redesign to save as many trees as possible. Took me an hour and like 20 something minutes to get here this morning, longer than it took me yesterday morning to get from Kilauei to Poipu. So, traffic does matter to some degrees, so you can make it to work on time and listen to everybody. So, there is, we have to have that balance.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bulisong?
Yes, I'd like to echo the, the thanks, mahalo chair, for getting this on the agenda. Mahalo to our departments for the presentation and, and working with the team, and especially mahalo to our community for showing up and being here, sharing your testimony, reaching out. In, in a perfect world, on every single matter, we hope that this is always the, the engagement where there's, there's strong community support and strong collaboration and communication and, and our government responds properly and do the right things. This project is, is, is one that just is echoing in my mind over and over because it is exactly, not exactly, it's a, a lot like what we experienced here on Rice Street and what I call my hometown, being born and raised here in Liuue, and the efforts that many have worked on for just as long as this project. And so, it's, it's, I'm getting all these flashbacks every time we're talking about trees and walkways and all the things, because, you know, for, when I moved back home 10 years ago, this is all the things that we were working on to make sure that was included in the revitalization of Liuue. And so, it's, I'm ecstatic and excited for our Koloa and Poipu community. It makes a huge difference when you have that walkability, safe routes, very considered spaces, and it is vital for us to always consider the space which we adapt to, because when we think about shared space, especially in built environments, built environments sometimes can't neglect the connection to Aina and people, because it just doesn't connect sometimes. And so, I'm really excited that the team has, has taken the time to pause and collaborate and connect, because the benefits are, is tremendous. Every morning, my son and I walk down Rice Street and water all the plants, and we say good morning to the plants. And now he's 19 months, and he knows, like, he, he's at the age where like he understands what we're doing, and he will wave at the plants. Oh, I'm like gonna cry, because that is the connection to the space, right? We're not waving necessarily at the paved parking lot or the paved sidewalk, but we're definitely grateful that we can actually walk and say hi to the plants every morning, because it was designed in, in collaboration with the space. And, and so, for a lot of us who call this place home permanently, it is always important for us to consider and put forth a, a plan that always look at Aina and our relationship with the space and, and how we interact, and always give priority to Aina, because Aina is what feeds us. And so, if we never consider that, we always will rob ourselves and our future of that relationship. And so, I'm really happy to see the work that is being done and the, especially the careful thought to make sure that we care for Aina, because every morning when I, when my son says good morning to the plants, I can't imagine kids growing up without that relationship right now. And so, I want to make sure that we have that in, in, in all of our spaces. So, thank you to the team for working super hard on this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Kovali?
I just want to say mahalo to everybody and all of our people, community members who came out and testified regarding the trees, but in general, the entire plan itself was in place for a long while and been every step of the way the community has been involved, but to kind of hone in on the tree part, which is a big part, and I appreciate the discussion, and I think it's a very important discussion. And was never to get rid of all the trees, but to, I mean, was never to, you know, to, to encourage the growth, but to manage it in a way that we can work together as a community. So, hopefully, we can continue to balance everything out and move forward. And then, of course, with the drainage system with Rupert over there, I know we talked about that in the past, so that's another one that we can work closely with our Public Works team on. But again, for today's discussion, I think just bringing it to the forefront and raising it, raising it to this level and talking story and hearing your hearts and souls on how important it is, and, but transforming our Koloa community now, you're turning into a walkable, kind of bikeable, more safe routes to school, if you will, all of it tied in is, was the bigger picture. And then, talking about the trees for today was another important part. So, appreciate the discussion and all of you coming out and sharing your mana'o and bringing it to the table. So, we look forward to more opportunities as we move forward to have you at the table as well, as we continue to move forward on our Koloa community. So, mahalo and aloha.
Mr. Kovali? Yeah, I too want to add my gratitude, mahalo nui loa to the community, to the neighbors for sharing, for showing up and sharing your mana'o and your on-the-ground experience. I think clearly we all agree that, you know, we should save as many of the trees as possible, even all of them if possible. We love and appreciate the beauty and importance of those trees. And then, at the same time, when it comes to public safety or even just access for our kupuna to have an easy chance of getting around the neighborhood, the sidewalks are so important. They're an investment, not just in the present, but in the future, right? As the community grows and people spread out more and go, go from place to place, the sidewalks will help in that way. And for, for a long time now, this county, our planners over in our planning department, they're, they're some of the best in the state and in, in the country even. I've lived in, on the continent for quite a while too, so I've seen some different cities and how they operate there. They go above and beyond when it comes to the planning work that they do, and they always put the community first. And we, we have, the engagement and the involvement of community is, is number one from our planning department. But yeah, like I was saying, we always, for the longest time now, supporting smart growth, you know, Get Fit Kauai, the work that they've done, safe routes to school, the Tiger Grant, the Raze Grant. I mean, we wouldn't have been able to get those federal funds to do this kind of like feel-good, extra type of projects. I mean, most cities don't have the money to do stuff like that, they're just trying to, or counties, they're just trying to do the basic stuff, right? But we were blessed because of good planning to get these federal funds, and so we're in a position to make it even better for the future, right? So, yeah, I mean, I, I just see it as a, as a positive thing, and, and whatever little things we need to work out, that's why we need to hear from you, and we appreciate. You know, the planners admitted that they overlooked some of the trees because it wasn't even on the map, so it's a good thing that you brought that forward, and I, I see it only getting better because, because of you. So, thank you, mahalo.
Anyone else? If not, I'll just close by saying, well, first of all, thank you to Julie Souza for calling me about the ribbons on the trees that led up to the site visit on September 30th, where a bunch of y'all came out. And I want to thank Troy, Boyd, Michael, and our new planner, I mean, our new engineer, Jonathan, he was there as well. And of course, Goodfellow Construction was there as well, and, and I gotta really mahalo them, as I said earlier, that they agreed to not proceed with the tree cutting until we were able to have this meeting. And as you heard, you know, there was a lot of revisions to that original plan by the engineers, and I appreciate that tremendously. Not everybody's going to be satisfied, but I think at the end of the day, we, you know, we gotta, we gotta compromise to some extent. I just hope that you will continue to look at ways to possibly save as many trees as we can. But you know, we talked a lot about the, these trees, these trumpet trees, but it, it's bigger than the trees, right? It's a character of the community. And I was just, as people were talking, I was jotting down some things, as I remember growing up on this island, and in fact, my family is all from Omau. Spent a lot of time in Omau and Koloa growing up. The family house is still there, not my family, my, my family never keep nothing, but my uncles are still out there. But I just listed some of the things that I think some of you will remember, obviously the old plantation-style houses, and Koloa still got a lot of those. The dirt roads and the dirt walking paths, I, you know, we walked on dirt, bare feet, played in the dirt. The old, old cars and the beat, beating up cars, just in the, you know, the families, the driveway. How about the glass bottles with the water for scare with the dogs and the cats? Remember that? I mean, everybody had one, right? That's, that's gone.
They work?
They do work, better than any chemical you can spray. Of course, chicken coops, that's still around. still around. Yeah, go get some water bottles. What about the dry boxes that people used to put all the aku inside? And, you know, many houses had that before, and you could smell them a mile away. And it seemed like everybody had a mango and a lychee or a lychee tree in their yard that we could freely go in and grab and eat, and even leave the seeds in their yard. They wouldn't get mad. And how about this antique clotheslines? We have a dryer that hasn't been used for 20 years. We hang our clothes. It's crazy. And then, of course, this is a Portuguese thing, but there were so many Portuguese here, the garage floors that were painted. Everybody's, every Portuguese garage was painted red or green or blue. Ours was red, my neighbor's was green, and it had nothing to do with the schools. I think it was whatever color was on sale is what they had, but those garages were so clean. And I bring that up because, to me, that's what this was about. That was what the alarm for me went off, was like, you know, we don't start thinking about those things. It's like my waistline. I was at a function last night, somebody rubbed my belly and said, man, you putting on weight. And I know that, but I used to be slim. But, you know, when you gain that pound, and the pound, and the pound, and then one day you look like this, and it's like, when did that happen? When did it happen? I don't remember getting fat. But it happens because I ignored the pound and the pound. Slowly by slowly, I was gaining a pound and another pound, and then I'm here. Same like this. We start losing all of these little items of character for our place. And the next thing you know, you know, I talk about Rice Street because Rice Street completely was redeveloped, and some people think it is beautiful. I kind of like the old style better. And, you know, for Rice Street, all the banks left. You know, there's a very few businesses left on Rice Street. The brewery just closed. So I think when we look at how, what is more important here is, for me, it's preserving our character, preserving our culture, preserving our island. And when we're talking about this area by Kukuiula Market, this is not a Rice Street. This is, people live there. It's a residential area that was so Koloa-ish. So when we start taking things away, like the tree, then before we know it, like my belly, it will be, wow, what happened to, what happened to this place? Well, we never notice as we were taking the little trees away, then the dirt road, and then next thing you know, it's this is not the Koloa I grew up in. But I agree with Mr. Kuli that there is a way that we can have the balance, and it's preserving those items that contribute to the character of these communities. Some communities are power, they're gone. We lost it a long time ago. But I remember in Hanalei, when we were talking about putting sidewalks out in Hanalei, curbs in Hanalei, we said, we don't hunt that. We like the grass shoulders. We like walking the grass. We like our feet feel the grass. So not every community is the same, definitely different from how we redevelop places on the mainland. We're different. We're a plantation community, and we gotta preserve as much of that as possible. So I appreciate the changes that were made. I really do. I mean, I sincerely appreciate the engineers because we, I know I speak for the council when we say we're not opposed to connecting everybody, connectivity. We're not opposed to allowing people to be able to walk around and bike around, but I don't think that the community should lose any of its character as a sacrifice. So that'll be it from me. And again, thank you all for being here today, all of you that had to come fight that traffic. There was an accident at the bridge. So we appreciate you guys being here and testifying. With that, the motion is to receive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. Next item?
Chair, this brings us back to page two, C2025-2005. Communication from the Director of Parks and Recreation requesting council approval to accept a donation from Nanotech 2000 of a palm tree, weevil killer product, in an effort to mitigate the coconut rhinoceros beetles at Wailea Golf Course with a total estimated value of $300,000, which will be tested on 15 coconut trees, is environmentally friendly, and will last for multiple years for mature trees.
Can I get a motion to receive?
To receive.
Second.
Okay.
Is Parks here?
Yes. Can I speak to this?
Okay, I'm sure the, excuse me, can you withdraw that motion to receive?
I'll withdraw my motion in a second.
And can I get a motion to approve with a thank you letter?
Motion to approve with a thank you letter.
Second.
Okay. And Councilmember Callan, you want to speak to this?
I would like to, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I've been working, as you guys know, on the coconut rhinoceros beetle as much as possible, trying to get support and services to our county. One of the products that some people are reporting good success with is this Nanotech 2000 product. There's been controversy about whether it does or doesn't work, but the manufacturer has offered a donation to us to treat 15 trees complimentary, basically, to see how it works and to see if we have a positive experience like some of these other experiences. So I brought this before Parks and our mayor's team to hopefully, you know, with your approval, we can accept this and give it a shot. We're having a very difficult time on the golf course managing this, and we are working on a few different projects right now to try to think outside the box on how we long-term treat the beetles' presence, including right now working on steaming, you know, larval management. And then this is another option. And if we find it successful, we might look at, you know, utilizing it more in the future as a possible tool, because I think we need all the tools that we can get. So this was just a generous donation from the manufacturer to give us a shot at using it on the golf course, and our Parks team has agreed to try it out on 15 different trees and see if we find it successful, so.
Chair, have a question. I'm sorry, there was so much noise going on. I could hardly hear what you were saying. Did you say what the technology is? I heard you say there's a technology. What does it do?
This particular product is a natural solution-based product. The active ingredient is sodium lauryl sulfate.
So it's a fluid?
It is a liquid fluid that's applied as a soil drench, surrounding the soil immediately around the roots of the coconut tree, and then it's absorbed into the tree and helps to resist predation by CRBs. So it is got a mixture of strong natural products, cloves, different things like that. We have found some successful scientific studies showing that basil actually is a really good deterrent also for the beetle. This is a mixture of essential oils, and then the active ingredient is actually sodium lauryl sulfate, which is a detergent. It, yeah, so it's a much more natural solution than the amitocloprid is, which is more heavily used. We have been using the amitocloprid injections on the golf course quite a bit, but we're noticing impacts to the trees, including big dark scars. We're not sure, like, long-term, how much we can do this year after year after year before we do lose those trees. So I think we're just trying to try the, there's a lot of suggestions that different things work, and, you know, I'm just trying to be open to the possibility that there are some other solutions as well, so.
So I just have another question, if it's okay for her, because I even yesterday got two calls from people who found coconut rhinoceros beetles, so they're in a little panic.
Yeah.
So I sent them to you, by the way.
Okay.
But first of all, is there a website for this company?
There is. There's a couple of websites that these guys have. They're currently in Bahrain, working on date palms with the Bahraini government, trying to protect those. It's a global company.
Nanotech 2000.
They also have a website. Shucks, hold on one second. I did just have it up. It's more specific to Hawaii and the use against CRB. There, you know, there is some controversy and accusations that the product doesn't work. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. If it does work, it works. That's kind of the way I'm looking at it. BeetlebustersofHawaii.com is also where they're landscaping this. It's one of the many products that people are saying is a possible solution. I think we need kind of an all-hands-on-deck approach to this, so I'm open to trying all the things.
And can you still eat the coconuts, and will it hurt the pollinators?
No.
Okay. And so they could try it?
They could try it. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. If it works, great. But, you know, they are very confident in their product, which is why they've given us this donation.
And we're gonna have reports on it once we see if it works?
Yeah. We'll have some sort of report back from the golf course on whether they feel, we're gonna basically stop injecting those 15 trees with amitocloprid, and we're gonna, you know, apply this drench and see if we notice a difference in predation and if we notice some success, because we are definitely losing our trees on the golf course.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other council members? Nope. Okay. All the rules are still suspended. Anyone in the audience wishing to testify? No? I'm gonna be meeting back to order, members' final discussion. Go ahead.
I'd just like to mahalo the team for being open to these ideas and willing to work with other partners to make this happen. I know it's a serious problem that we're addressing. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to mahalo all the creativity that's willing to experiment with different solutions. And I know as it's moving into other areas, people are really worried about their organic certification as they've had their businesses. So there, you know, there's a little bit of a fear to even flag when they're found because they don't want to be forced to use those chemicals that would then undermine years of effort of putting their organic certification together. That's at least the fear.
No? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you to all my colleagues. I really appreciate you guys being open to having this discussion and accepting this donation. You know, I'm trying all the things. So at my house, I have three different traps set up right now, using UV lights and pheromone attractants and netting. I've got basil oil in a water gun that I shoot on my tree once a week, and I'm trying my own experiments in my yard. But I'm just really grateful that this, I want to thank, you know, these Nanotech 2000 guys for being, you know, open to submitting a donation to us and trying to support and help us. I think we need, you know, to try all the things. And so I'm just really thankful that you guys are willing to have this conversation.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to say thank you to you, Councilmember Hallen, for working so closely with our Parks folks and for just jumping on top of this with your background and all. So we really appreciate that. No further discussion. All those in favor of approval with a thank you letter, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item, please.
C2025-2006, communication from the Director of Parks and Recreation requesting council approval to receive and expend appropriations from the state legislature of 2025 in the amount of $11,500,000 of capital improvement funds to be used for the Hanapepe Stadium improvements and the Vidina Stadium improvements.
Second. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
On page three, C2025-2007, communication from the Emergency Management Administrator requesting council approval to receive and expend a supplement to the United States Department of Homeland Security recurring grant funds via the State of Hawaii Department of Defense, Hawaii Emergency Management Agency in the amount of $2,500 for the Fiscal Year 2024 Emergency Management Performance Grant, which will support emergency management programs and inner-island travel expenses for the Ko'i Emergency Management Agency staff and partners to attend training and exercise activities.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C2025-2009, communication from the County Clerk requesting council approval of the Hawaii State Public Library's conditions for the use of state library facilities to allow the Elections Division to set up ballot return identification envelope drop boxes at the Princeville, Kapaa, and Hanapepe Public Libraries during the 2026 primary and general elections.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item?
On page four, C2025-211, communication from the Director of Human Resources, transmitting for council consideration the cost items for the State of Hawaii Organization of Police Officers partnering Unit 12 for the period July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2029, based on an arbitrated award and in accordance with procedures contained in Chapter 89 of Hawaii Vice Statutes pursuant to Section 89-11 and Ko'i County Charter, Section 19.13B.
Move to receive. Thank you. This is the memo that's attached to the bill, but I'll take testimony now if anyone has it. If not, are we anticipating any questions for show pool, for members of the council? No? Okay.
I called them and talked to them.
Perfect, thank you. With that, the motion is to receive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C2025-213, communication from the Director of Finance requesting council approval to accept travel-related reimbursed expenses from the International Association of Assessing Officers for the County of Ko'i Rural Property Tax Manager to attend the 2025 IAAO Fall Leadership Days Meeting, which will be held in Kansas City, Missouri on November 7th through 8th, 2025. The meeting ensures that the county remains at the forefront of industry standards and best practices, provides networking with others, gains insight into the latest trends and developments in the field, and fosters relationships that can lead to future collaborations.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony?
I'll ask if it's appropriate to ask. I mean, there was, there was just a meeting in September, right? The conference in September in Florida?
I'm not sure.
Okay, I just, okay. I just wondered.
We can ask. We'll suspend the rules.
Did you go to that?
If someone from finances is here that can. I will suspend the rules.
First of all, thank you for being willing to go to a Fall Leadership Days meeting. Did anybody go to the September one?
Chelsea Sakai, Director of Finance. So Scott Toria, our County Property Tax Manager, is gonna go to the fall days.
The fall one. Did anybody go to the September one?
Yes, he and I and two others from the office.
So was it, was it good? Did you learn much?
It was a good conference.
Okay. This one I wish I could go to, but I'm not gonna go. But I was hoping it was good, that we got a lot. Okay, I just, that's all. I just wanted to know.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? The motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C2025-214, communication from the Director of Finance requesting council approval of the acceptance of terms contained within the TTEC Application Service Agreement, which integrates with the existing System Innovators software to facilitate automating clearinghouse payments through the County of Ko'i online payment portal. This application will be used by multiple departments, including fire prevention, liquor control, parks and recreation, building, planning, rural property, and the Ko'i Police Department.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Thank you. Any discussion or public testimony?
Yeah, there's a simple question to you on that.
I will suspend the rules.
So I just wanted, just a simple clarification for me and as well as the public who might be watching. So this is the same technology we use for payments on other systems online? Is it the same one?
So this is specific to our connect.ko'i.gov website, where we currently have forms and different payments that we accept. Right now, that website only accepts credit cards. This would allow us to do ACH transactions, which is bank-to-bank.
Okay, and so, okay, automatic clearinghouse, that's what AC means?
ACH, yes.
And so that's the typical way people might be wanting to pay. They just do a direct deposit from their bank account?
Right, rather than using a credit card.
Okay. All right, so that's gonna be for fire, liquor control. So this is when people are getting permits or any way they want to pay for the county?
Correct.
So it's making it even easier?
More options, yes.
More options?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question.
Go ahead, Mr. Kuli.
Do you know if, you know, you just said more options. Will this option being that it's pure or simpler, bank-to-bank, will it still have the same fee that a credit card charge would have?
It'll be a lesser fee.
It's a lesser fee.
Yeah, usually credit cards are based on percentage, and ACH is usually just a $5 fee, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? The motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
On page five, C2025-215, communication from the Director of Finance requesting council approval to dispose of various records pursuant to Hawaii Vice Statute, Section 46-43, and Resolution Number 2021-48, which have been kept for over seven years and are no longer of use or value.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, with that, I'll suspend the rules.
I had a few questions. I had a few questions. I did send them ahead. I don't know that I got a response, but maybe you don't have enough time. So when it says disposing of county audited financial reports prior to 2017, I have to assume that means just the peripheral materials because we would want to keep the real county audited financial report indefinitely, wouldn't we?
Correct. It's all on the website. This is the work papers that they use.
This is the work papers. Okay, so we wouldn't get rid of that because I was like, oh.
Correct.
Okay, and then on the ag dedication files, 1971 to 2017, what exactly does it mean on throwing those away? Because I know I've had a handful of people in distress when their ag dedication applications have been apparently lost by the county. And so some of these ag dedications are 20 years old, so this wouldn't be anything that was activated in any way, only expired ones.
Correct. Only expired or canceled, and the program has since changed. And so none of these apply anymore. They're never referenced, they're sitting in the storage collecting dust.
And is, okay, and then, yeah, because I was like, some of these things seem important, like treasury files, but there's probably some record somehow.
Anything that we would need to reference again is being kept.
Like scanned or something like that? Okay, those were my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions for finance? If not, thank you very much. I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Page five, C-2025-216, communication from the Executive on Aging requesting council approval to receive and expend additional state funds in the amount of $501,067 and to indemnify the State Executive Office on Aging to be used by the County of Koi Agency on Elderly Affairs for the Kupuna Care Program to provide case management services, adult daycare, assisted transportation, tour services, homemaker services, Kupuna Care, transportation, personal care, home-delivered meals, respite care, and caregiver support services for the period July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2026.
Would you approve?
Okay.
Any discussion or public testimony?
I sent a simple question over. I don't, I just have a simple question. It's probably very easy to answer.
All right, with that, I'll suspend the rule.
Yalana Guma is coming, content for Elderly Affairs.
Okay, thank you so much. I just, half a million dollars, 501,000, I'm happy to see that amount. Thank you for applying and receiving that. I'm just curious, how many people will this serve? And did we increase our amount or how many is on the waitlist? Because I know it seems like it's a growing group, and so are we able to get, address more? And how many are waiting?
So based on the fiscal year 2026 budget request that we had, that was to remove all of the people on the waitlist.
Yay. And that's the answer I was hoping for, and I just wanted to confirm it. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. With that, I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C-2025-217, communication from the County Engineer requesting council approval to purchase unbudgeted equipment of a Smith &amp; Loveless Drywell Maintenance Lift Unit due to an unanticipated mechanical failure of an existing elevator that provides access to the drywall at the Wailea Cocoa Palm Sewer Pump Station at a cost of approximately $290,000. The equipment will replace the existing elevator, which is obsolete, and parts to repair the existing elevator are no longer available.
Would you approve?
Okay.
I'll suspend the rule. Can someone come up? Ms. Cowden has a question.
Thank you for having this. Okay, I understand it is simply an elevator to help do the repairs?
Correct. Donald Fujimoro, Chief of Waste Water Management Division. So our facility is, again, obsolete. It's over 40 years old. The current elevators work on a chain-driven system, which now has been obsolete, so they no longer produce it. The new updated elevators use a cable system, so we're trying to, it's been down for about two or three months now. So we really need this elevator to be able to respond more timely in case of emergency.
Thank you for that. I know it's important because that particular pump station seems to routinely have spills or problems, and so you're saying it's obsolete. So when we're putting $290,000 into the elevator, which I support, do we have a plan to change that pump system or move it? I mean, it seems like that's been a problem almost as long as it's been in there. I regularly get problems about the smell, and I know it's been a real issue for the hotel. I understand they offered to move it or fix it themselves. Do we have a plan to change that? Or so when?
It's not on the near-term plan. We just updated the electrical upgrade and generators. There are a lot of other projects with higher priority right now, so, yeah, it's not on the next or near future to update this facility.
Okay, I just, I just want to make a comment that, you know, the businesses around there are suing the county, everybody's bombed, the hotel.
We understand that.
Potentially really bombed, yeah.
Yes, and that's why we do put a priority on trying to maintain it, you know, as best as we can.
Okay. All right. I'll just say also, the gas station says they have a hard time even holding on to employees because of the problem there. All right.
Any other questions for wastewater? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C-2025-219, communication from Councilmember Holland and Council Vice Chair Kuli, transmitting for council consideration a bill for an ordinance to establish a new Article 29, Chapter 22, Koi County Code 1987 as amended relating to the disposal, disposable bodyboard reduction to define and prohibit the sale, rental, or distribution of disposable bodyboards within the County of Koi.
Would you receive?
Again, this is the memo connected to the bill, which we'll take up later, but I don't see anyone in the audience from the public, so motion is to receive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Chair, next item is on page six, C-2025-221, communication from Council Chair Repuzzle, transmitting for council consideration a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance number B-2025-905 as amended relating to the operating budget of the County of Koi, State of Hawaii for the fiscal year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026 by revising the amounts estimated in the general fund, and a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance number B-2025-906 as amended relating to the capital budget of the County of Koi, State of Hawaii for the fiscal year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026 by revising the amounts estimated in the general fund, CIP, for improvements to the Wailea Golf Course Cart Path.
Would you receive?
Okay.
Again, this is the memo attached to the bill, we'll take up later. No one here in the audience wishing to testify? The motion is to receive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Next item is a legal document, C-2025-222, communication from the Planning Director requesting council acceptance and approval of a dedication deed from Kilua Ohana Plateau LLC to the County of Koi, land donation of seven lots, two roadways, and one multi-use path located at TMK number 452-005-058 and TMK 452-005-059 and TMK number 452-005-023. This is a dedication deed, roadway lot A and dedication deed, path lot 1.
Would you approve?
Okay.
With that, I'll suspend the rules just so we can get, they're passing us out of photos, so if someone can come up and share what this is and confirm that there will be no trees that are cut in this. Yeah.
How's it, Council? My name is Koa with the Housing Agency. Adam had to be on Oahu today, so we got the second, third string guy here. But I passed out a map that I put together. I think typically, planning normally does the dedication deeds that the county receives, but since these two parcels are. The two parcels that are being dedicated are a big part of our Kilua Town Expansion, Affordable Housing Project, which is better suited that we be here. So if you got your maps up here, in yellow is roadway lot A, which is a new road that will be connecting Kilua Town from where the post office is, and you can see it comes out to Kohio Highway, right across the street from Anaina Hall Community Park. And then path lot 1 is a plan to be a shared use path that will get you from our project in Kilua Town all the way down to Secret Beach. So going back to roadway lot A, we have already secured federal funds that we're already in process with designing and engineering for that roadway. And then, I thought Michael Mole was going to be here. Oh, there he is. Yes, he is. We had already, in working with Michael, secured state stip funds to pay for that road. So really, we're on our way pretty soon here. I think we're scheduled to submit the plans for permits by the end of this calendar year. So that's moving along. On the path lot 1, still kind of in progress, but our idea is to pave it, you know, as far as we can to get down to Secret Beach. So I guess with that, if you guys have any questions, happy to take them.
So, yeah, and while this is finally happening, it seems like it should have happened five years ago. What makes it wait on that June 09th? If you don't know, that's fine, but I mean, it was, it's been ready and waiting for a long time.
Oh, sorry. I asked, just to repeat it because my mic wasn't there, just wondering why it's taken so long? Because this has been, the subdivision, the subdivision was so long ago.
Chair members of council, Michael Mole again for the record. Sorry, Koa. As you started talking, I was debriefing with my staff about the last thing I was here for. So the reason why we waited to have this dedicated, honestly, is because we didn't want a strip of land in between a bunch of fields that we couldn't easily maintain. So we actually, when there was discussion about dedicating a few years ago, we said, let's wait. And now that the county either has or is.
Obtained the other two parcels yet? It's close, right?
The other two parcels, the Kilua Town expansion are shown on the map. Now that those are in the process of being maintained, sorry, obtained by housing, we felt, well, let's get this too, because we're taking responsibility for those larger parcels, we can get these as well.
Yeah.
That was kind of the thought.
Okay, I was hearing from the landowner for some time wanting that changed, so that's why I've been asking.
Yeah, we didn't want to own this huge strip of land we didn't have good access to, to have to maintain it or deal with anything in there.
Okay, and then just as a clarification, the bike path, which I've been trying to work on, on that too, so I'm glad that's happening. And just for the clarification, it doesn't go all the way down to Kauapea Beach, it goes to the top of the trail, just for people who are listening. It doesn't make it all the way down to the bottom, I don't believe.
That's correct.
Yeah, the parcel, you can kind of see where it ends at the top, right there.
It'll go over to Kalihui Road and then go down the driveway, I mean, the easement, the dry easement, I think, maybe? I mean, the dirt easement, but Kauapea Beach is still yet down a very steep trail. So just in case people are listening. But thank you.
Yeah, it will provide a, you know, safer path to get there. I think most of the kids are riding along the highway to get there.
It's excellent. So I've been trying to get that, had some opportunities for that about five years ago.
That pedestrian path will connect to the existing easement, right?
Yeah.
It's going to, it's going to meet up, so that will take them to the existing easement that we have.
Kind of a gravel road right now.
And I would like to extend gratitude to the landowner across whose land it will go through.
All right, any more questions for the admin? If not, thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize the importance of that route for kids and everyone to access because it is super dangerous. So I just want to say that this is wonderful, and thank you very much for all the hard work, guys.
Thank you. With that, the motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item.
Next item, we're claiming, C-2025-223, communication from the County Clerk, transmitting a claim filed against the County of Koi by Delphin Castillo for vehicle damage and personal injuries pursuant to Section 23.06 Charter of the County of Koi. C-2025-224, communication from the County Clerk, transmitting a claim filed against the County of Koi by Feliciano Alcantara for personal property damage pursuant to Section 23.06 Charter of the County of Koi. And on page seven, C-2025-225, communication from the County Clerk, transmitting a claim filed against the County of Koi by Keith Arakaki for vehicle damage pursuant to Section 23.06 Charter of the County of Koi.
Would you refer to the county attorney for disposition and report back?
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. This is probably a good place to take a lunch break because it's already 12:00 and we have a bunch of first reading and. If I think there's going to be discussion? I don't have to eat. I mean, I'm okay. It's just the staff. I want to make sure the staff is not.
We'll probably get through it, but my guess is.
Okay, next item.
This is Resolution, Resolution Number 2025-37, Resolution repealing Resolution Number 18 and authorizing the county attorney to investigate, settle, and pay claims against the County of Koi.
Would you approve?
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Bolasan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavallio.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli.
Aye.
Council Chair Repuzzle.
Aye.
Six ayes, one excuse.
Next item.
Bill for first reading, proposed draft bill number 2975, a bill for an ordinance approving a collective bargaining agreement for bargaining unit 12 between July 1st, 2025 and June 30th, 2029.
Would you approve on first reading, scheduled for public hearing on November 12th, and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee?
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony?
Small piece of discussion. I did call Shoppo and talk to them. They all seem happy and fine.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, the motion is to approve on first reading. Roll call.
Councilmember Bolasan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavallio.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli.
Aye.
Council Chair Repuzzle.
Aye.
Six ayes, one excuse.
Next item, please.
Proposed draft bill number 2976, a bill for an ordinance to establish a new Article 29, Chapter 22, Koi Conical 1987 as amended relating to disposable bodyboard reduction.
Would you approve on first reading, scheduled for public hearing on November 12th, and refer to the committee of the whole.
Second.
This is the one that I kind of wanted to have some discussion on for the public's information because the title can be confusing. So, and I just want to make sure the public knows before the public hearing what this bill is about. So any, Fern or Kipukai?
I can start. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. So this is one of the things that I've been looking at for low hanging fruit on solid waste issues as diversion from the landfill and pollution in our environment. It was actually brought up initially by a firefighter to me and then by a lifeguard about noticing these disposable styrofoam boogie boards breaking down on the beaches. And then brought up to me by another marine advocate. And I had three separate people, totally unrelated, bring up banning these bodyboards. So I started looking into it. Maui has already implemented this, this rule. And basically, it's those like one-time-use SNAP disposable, like styrofoam boogie boards that genuinely break the first time they're ever used and end up just being left next to the trash cans on our beach parks. And so there's been some pictures that were sent in to me from people, you know, showing them breaking apart on the beach because they're very thinly lined with like a material, but they're just styrofoam inside. And so the idea is this one thing, banning it, not allowing them on Kauai to reduce just the amount of disposable things that we're going through. I know that prior to COVID, we were actually looking at really moving to eliminate a lot of these one-off disposable plastic products altogether. To me, this is just like a really simple, low-hanging issue that I think we can address simply by banning them. It looks like there's only a few places that still sell them on Kauai, from what I can tell. I've done outreach to a lot of different organizations. I haven't seen anybody oppose this. I've asked all the swim organizations if they use them. They don't use the styrofoam boards, like kickboards. They don't use those same disposable ones. I haven't had a single person oppose, and I tried to do quite a bit of outreach, including to our lifeguards and fire team. And, you know, overall, it just kind of seemed like a straightforward, pretty simple thing that we've already seen other counties work to do. I think that the styrofoam issue, you know, we've known about it for a long time. So it's not like new information. Yeah, so if there's any questions, I'm happy to respond to that.
I just have one question. Well, go ahead.
The only thing I would add is that, like Councilmember Holland, I see this as a fairly simple item that may have been left out prior. When you think about those styrofoam coolers, and one of the testifiers even referred to this as like single use because it does break down so easily and it is just litter and harmful to the environment. So, yeah. Go ahead.
My question is the enforcement and how do we come to the county engineer as being the enforcement agency?
I forget exactly how that was like, we did that during attorney conversations, I believe. Or I forget exactly how that was allocated, that that was the right.
Just, I don't see the connection at all, but I.
I think that was the other, we enforced other, there was other restrictions. I have to go back through some of those emails, but there was a reason that that laid there. And it was.
I guess I just, you don't have to come up, but the county engineer, okay with this?
Okay.
Comes under the engineer's office. Wow.
So, so I have a question and suggestion. The question is, when you looked at Maui's, the fact that Maui has one, that gives me a lot more confidence that it's manageable because I would look at what Maui's pathway is with the big box stores because that's who really sells them, the large corporate stores. So if Maui's already not selling them, that means they would have something in place with those store managers. I think maybe, you know, Foodland or Safeway you might have to look at too. But those are kind of in some ways large stores. Big Box, I think of as like Walmart, Target, Costco. So a phone call to them, but if Maui already has that in place, that makes it a whole lot easier for them to could send something over. Because taking power, I mean, taking responsibility a little bit away from the county engineer is if they're not even sold, that's the biggest piece.
Yeah.
So if there's that barrier that's going to happen there, because then people, maybe they bring them with them on their trip and there's going to be a few that get thrown away from time to time. But I think the problem will go away if the, if the source is gone. You might check Ace Hardware or something like that, too. You know, it's those big stores, corporate stores, that typically are bringing them in. And so if there's all that planned in place, I would, I would try and just make sure we've moved on that.
Yeah, thank you for that. And just following up, Chair. Yeah, so it is the same enforcement as the styrofoam ban that we already placed. So that's where it is. It's ordinance ten seventy nine that did that. So it's, yeah, it was a little confusing. I remember going back and forth on why that.
Do you think before our committee meeting, you can check on that and then?
The enforcement side of Maui?
The enforcement side on Maui. I mean, not the enforcement side, like how they've communicated with the big box stores. Because then if we can have a letter from, it might be nice to just reach out to those big box stores and get them to say no. And usually that might be the existing inventory can still sell and then no more reorders.
All right, perfect. The motion is to approve on first reading. Roll call.
Councilmember Boluson.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalli.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Repuzzle.
Aye.
Six ayes, one excuse.
Next item.
Item is proposed draft bill number two nine seven seven, bill for an ordinance amending ordinance number B two zero two five dash nine oh five as amended relating to the operating budget of the County of Kauai, State of Hawaii for the fiscal year July first, 2025 through June thirtieth, 2026 by revising the amounts estimated in the general fund for the Wailea Golf Course Kart Path operating budget, four hundred forty five thousand dollars.
Would you approve on first reading, scheduled for public hearing on November twelfth, and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee?
Okay.
Thank you. Moving second. And real quick, this is simply to supplement the existing funding that already is in place for the completion of the kart path at the Wailea Golf Course, which this council approved a while ago. And the bids came back higher than we had budgeted. So this will provide the sufficient amount for that project to move forward. That damaged, the lappidated kart path right now is creating issues for the brand-new golf carts that the concessioner has. And it needs to be, it needs to be completed. It's been neglected for way too long. So that's what this does. Go ahead.
I have a simple question, and I'm definitely going to support this. But where did the four hundred and forty five thousand come from? Was it unspent something or?
The fund balance.
The fund balance from last year?
In this year's budget. Yeah, there's a fund balance, right?
Okay, all right. So nothing's getting taken away?
It's, no, I mean, that was, unless the administration is a better place to get that money. I didn't want to go start disrupting their CIP projects.
Yeah, all right.
But I believe this is something that's long overdue. And in fact, to the Parks Department who went back and massaged the contract and got it reduced even further from one point nine million to one point five about. So appreciate the work that was done by the Parks Department to get that down. But the other option would be having to wait for the next fiscal year budget, which would be way too long in my opinion. So.
Okay, I think it's great. I just, so we're not taking something away?
We're not taking anything away. Any other questions? If not, thank you. The motion is to approve. Roll call.
Councilmember Boluson.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalli.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Repuzzle.
Aye.
Six ayes, one excuse. The last item is proposed draft bill number two nine seven eight, a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance number B two zero two five dash nine oh six as amended relating to the capital budget of the County of Kauai, State of Hawaii for the fiscal year July first, 2025 through June thirtieth, 2026, by revising the amounts estimated in the general fund CIP. Again, this is for the Wailea Golf Course Kart Path.
Just a companion bill. Would you approve on first reading, scheduled for public hearing on November twelfth, and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Boluson.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalli.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuli'i.
Aye.
Council Chair Repuzzle.
Aye.
Six ayes, one excuse.
Good call on the lunch break. This meeting is adjourned.